Ms. Capizoli. Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Oakman.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Ms. Sax. Mr. Texarney.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Chow.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson. And this is getting. Okay.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you.
And Curry Mia just came in.
Oh, great. Uh, this is the June 3 regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2021 resolution of the regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2021 through January 2022. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 22, 21. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 25, 2021 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, the coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 20, excuse me, January 6, 2021. Please note, as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at specific points in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the center of the bottom of the participant screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Um, so moving on, the, the agenda doesn't show announcements, but it usually does, so. Uh, and I myself have a brief one. Does anybody else have any announcements, staff or board members?
No.
I just wanted to let the board know, um, the master plan subcommittee met last Friday to review and discuss the draft request for proposals or RFP for consulting services related to the comprehensive update of the community master plan. It was a good meeting with good feedback and suggestions, which were incorporated quickly by staff, and that draft is now in, now being reviewed by the municipal attorney. We're hoping to issue it next week. Uh, and the deadline for receiving proposals will be three weeks from the date that we issue that RFP. So we'll publicize it through the League of Municipalities, through American Planning Association, New Jersey Chapter. We'll send it to specific planners and firms whose work we know and respect. And of course, if you have anyone that you want to make sure receives it, please give their name to, to Michael. And Michael, are, I assume we also will post it on the municipal website? Would that be under the Planning Department, or is there an RFP section or both?
Um, I would say we should do both. Um, I'll let the, I'll let you know. I'll have to look into that.
All right, we, that'd be good. Okay. Next up, we have administrative business, the appointment of Planning Board Conflict Council, Stephen Goodell from Parker McKay and the associates he works with. We got a resolution to review. And does anybody have any questions or comments? Would someone like to move it? Mr. Cohen is moving it. Is there a second?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan, seconds. Um, can we do this with a voice vote, or? Should we do a voice vote? Okay, I'm seeing a couple of heads nodding. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Great. Next up, we have a discussion about ordinance referrals, ordinance 2021-14 and 2021-15. These relate to redevelopment plans for property located at North Harrison Street, the first one, 2021-14 for block 7401, a portion of lot 1.011. And the second ordinance, 2021-15, also for redevelopment plan for property located at North Harrison and Turhune Road, block 7401, lots 1.02. Oh, it says, oh, the agenda says 1.02 and 1.02. What is the? Is it 1.01 and 1.02, or 1.012?
No, it's, it's 1.01C01, and that'll be explained.
Okay. So I understand that, uh, redevelopment council, Mr. Regan, is going to start off, uh, we'll, we'll have a presentation about these ordinances and the redevelopment plans that accompany them. Um, and then Michael Sullivan will pick up after Mr. Regan is finished. So without further ado, Frank, do you want to share your screen or anything, or are you just going to?
No, no, I, I just, I just have a couple of statements that I wanted to make, and then I think Michael Sullivan will probably, you know, carry the, uh, the heavy load on this.
Okay.
But I just wanted to kind of set the framework. Tonight's meeting of the board to review the two proposed redevelopment plans did not require any special notice. You know, special notice was required for the redevelopment area designation hearing that was conducted by the board last month. And redevelopment plans being considered tonight deal with the two inclusionary housing sites, which are part of the municipality's affordable housing settlement. One includes a portion of the Princeton Shopping Center property, but neither redevelopment plan this evening addresses, being considered this evening, addresses the redevelopment of the shopping center itself. The governing body recently designated the owner of the shopping center as a conditional redevelop, or in discussions on the shopping center redevelopment are expected to occur this summer. The redevelopment law requires that all provisions of a redevelopment plan shall be either substantially consistent with the master plan or designed to effectuate the master plan. And that is the purpose of tonight's meeting for the board, to determine if these redevelopment plans are substantially consistent with, or designed to effectuate the municipal master plan. The local redevelopment housing law states that the planning board shall transmit to the governing body a report containing its recommendations concerning the redevelopment plan, and this report shall include an identification of any provisions in a proposed redevelopment plan which are inconsistent with the master plan, and recommendations concerning these inconsistencies, as well as any other matters the board sees appropriate. The two redevelopment plans being reviewed tonight essentially transfer the standards and requirements for what's referred to as the Turhune-Harrison-Win and PSC Inclusionary Residential Avalon Bay sites from the inclusionary zoning ordinances previously adopted by the council. And it transferred, you know, th- those requirements to these redevelopment plans. Because the inclusionary zoning ordinances and sites were court approved as part of the Affordable Housing declaratory judgment action that the municipality was a party to, there was no change to any of the parameters and standards and requirements in those inclusionary zoning ordinances. Otherwise, the municipality would be required to go back to court and seek approval for those changes. That's an important fact because the redevelopment plans essentially are the same as the adopted inclusionary ordinances. Because the planning and, and the planning board already reviewed those ordinances and found them to be consistent with the master plan before they were adopted. The redevelopment law does require certain other provisions be included in redevelopment plans. And I believe the testimony from Michael Sullivan, a planning consultant for the municipality who was involved in the preparation of the redevelopment plans, you know, we'll, we'll discuss those provisions as well as talk about the redevelopment plan's relationship to the master plan and zoning ordinance. So that's all I had, Madam Chair. I just wanted to sort of, you know, outline the, the framework of, of tonight's meeting, and I know Mr. Sullivan is prepared to, you know, to address each of the redevelopment plans and, and Michael Laplace also obviously will, will chime in as he indicated as, as necessary.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan? You're up.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. What's that?
I'm sorry to interrupt your opening words. Do you need to share your screen?
Uh, I, I may, I may, I may put up the, uh, the aerials so we can see what we're talking about.
I think we should probably swear you in and.
Yep.
I know you've appeared before the board before and so on, but I think for the record, it probably makes sense, so you can.
Correct.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, for the record, I'm Michael Sullivan. I'm a principal with Clark, Kate, and Hints in Trenton, New Jersey, and a professional planner and licensed landscape architect. Um, and we've been involved in Princeton's affordable housing work since, uh, since after the, this fairness hearing and settlement documents with the court. Uh, we prepared the 2020 Housing Plan Element Fair Share Plan and the implementing is which are relevant tonight. Um, and we've been working with Princeton to continue to implement the court-approved settlement as necessary after the judgment, uh, conditional judgment of our pose last fall. Um, and these ordinances, as Mr. Regan said, really are, uh, a shift in the characterization of ordinances that have already existed, inclusionary ordinances, the AH5 Inclusionary Ordinance Zone, which, uh, it, it covers the Win or Comfort property at the north end of town of, of the Princeton Shopping Center, and the, um, the AH05, which is an overlay which encompassed the Avalon Bay proposal and settled provision for affordable housing last year. Let me pull up my. I apologize. I had these up and my computer shut down.
Um, Mr. Regan, since Michael Laplace might jump, you know, chime in at one point or another, should he be sworn in as well?
Sure.
While we're waiting?
I'm almost there.
Raise your hand. You swear that any testimony that you give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Terrific. Okay, now I think I can share my screen. Is that visible to folks?
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh, so, uh, the two, the two redevelopment plans we're talking about tonight are the Harrison-Turhune redevelopment plan and the Princeton Shopping Center Inclusionary Residential Redevelopment Plan. The drafts are both dated, uh, May 21, 2021, and they're both located in the North Harrison redevelopment area, which was designated by the municipality on April 27 of this year. Redevelopment plans, as, as Mr. Regan said, for each of these wraps the existing Inclusionary Affordable Housing ordinances within the framework of the redevelopment plan. Uh, and there are no changes to the fundamental ordinance requirements within the plan in terms of the bulk zoning. And also, more importantly, the terms that would require the provision of affordable housing consistent with the court-ordered settlement that we have. Um, but there are refinements to, um, the zoning in terms of some bulk and spatial character issues, as well as, um, design, design regulations and guidelines. So, um, and the reason that, uh, the redevelopment plan format, uh, is in framework is, is helpful to looking at this, uh, at these two zones and making them, uh, better for implementation of other goals and policies of the municipality is that the redevelopment, uh, of this entire area is looked at in stages, and the redevelopment plans are more like a combination of a master plan and ordinance whereby you can have goals and objectives. It provides for more latitude in the designation of design standards and the provisions of public elements and public infrastructure. Um, it allows for more, uh, detailed articulation of the rights and obligations of both redevelopers and of the municipality. As I said, more robust design controls. And it, it allows for, in a, particularly in a, in a redevelopment area like this, where you have, um, the Princeton Shopping Center at the, at the core of this, but you've got this, these two separate, uh, multifamily housing zones. It allows better coordination among those disparate, uh, properties to coordinate common infrastructure like circulation and other things like that, stormwater management possibly, where you have different owners. And it allows for many of the other benefits that come along with the redevelopment housing law. So, uh, the first, the first, uh, plan that I'm going to talk about tonight is the, the Harrison-Turhune redevelopment, uh, plan, which is, if you can see my cursor, it's a big hand on my screen. I don't know if it's a big hand on your screen, but it's the north end of the shopping center. It's like an L-shaped piece, which, um, is, uh, starts right at the edge of the, of the parking lot and the circulation road, and it, and it gets up to the corner of Harrison and Turhune there. Um, this is the former, uh, or what is now known as the AH5 Zone, and we've been very specific in the redevelopment plan to say that we are going to maintain all of those affordable housing requirements that were settled on with the, uh, court. So Comfort, known as the Comfort Site, which formerly had, uh, an application for some other, um, development, and now the Win Site, which is developer who the municipality been able to interact with in developing, uh, how this might be developed. And what this permits is, uh, multifamily, uh, apartment development, uh, with no more than 130 dwelling units. But that, but it must have at least 12 affordable housing, uh, dwelling units that are de-restricted within that in order to comply with the affordable housing settlement. There are architectural, uh, guidelines and standards within this, uh, red- redevelopment plan. And in order to better articulate the form and scale of the building and such that it's modulated in order to break up, uh, the mass of the building and create, um, visual, uh, breaks and interests uh, so that the, a building developed here will not be, um, uh, oppressive to the pedestrian environment and would fit better within that context. It also provides for, uh, requirements for bicycle pedestrian access, um, and engagement of a, uh, a new road that's planned to the east, uh, side of this, uh, near the 375 Turhune Site. And it provides for how access to the site is handled, requiring access from both, uh, the, um, uh, Turhune and Harrison, um, as well as, uh, from, uh, the new, um, road. Uh, it requires public open space and it requires public art. And, and, uh, within the, the framework of the regulations here, it's fairly detailed because the municipality was able to work with the developer to get agreement on how this building could be, designed in a way to fulfill, um, good design, current, uh, market for housing, so it's very desirable, uh, and to also accommodate the public, uh, interest in open space access and, uh, the affordable housing. And that's located right at the top of the map there. I'm going to stop sharing and then share the other map so we know what we're talking about.
I have a quick question, Mr. Sullivan. You mentioned that there, my, it, it allows for up to 130 dwelling units. If there are that many, will 20% of them be set aside for affordable, or? I, that, I thought that I had read that in the, uh, David is nodding his head. I thought I had read that in the ordinance and redevelopment plan, so I just wanted to clarify that, that it could be whatever, 60 units or something with 12? Or 130 with 24 or 25?
It, it can go up, but it can't go down.
Right, right. Okay.
That's the point. The point is that we have a floor.
And it would be at least 20%, is that, is that right?
It, 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 it's, it's a minimum of 20%, but it cannot be less than 12.
Less than 12 units.
Right, right, because we have to make, we have to ensure that we don't lose units pursuant to ourselves. We have to make sure.
Exactly. I just wanted to make sure that was completely clear, and maybe I beat it to death, but.
No, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, the, the exhibit, this is exhibit three from the, uh, Princeton Shopping Center Inclusionary Residential Development, Redevelop- Redevelopment Plan. It's a lot to say, I'm sorry. And this, this map, uh, shows the area to the south side of the shopping center, which actually encompasses a portion of one of the, uh, buildings within the shopping center. And this is the, uh, area that was, uh, the, this, the AH05 overlay ordinance, which gave the ability to have, um, up to 200 dwelling units here, multifamily residential apartments, and it was part of the Avalon Bay settlement, uh, which agreed to this. Uh, and so that ordinance is now subsumed in this redevelopment plan. Uh, and then, like I said, 200 dwelling units maximum, a minimum of 40 affordable housing dwelling units, but a minimum of 44 affordable housing credits in order to accommodate all, you know, alternative, um, provision. Uh, this includes access provisions to ensure that shared access between the shopping center and this site is accommodated. Uh, it includes architectural design standards that are very similar to those, um, uh, and the, and the Harrison-Turhune, but not quite as detailed because the, uh, the Avalon, uh, negotiation from last year really set up what their expectations were and what their agreement was based on. So, but there are uh, architectural design regulations in order to do similar things, to, to modulate the scale of the building in such a way that it's, um, it brings this, the perceived scale down to more pedestrian and human scale. Um, the, uh, provision of in wrapping the parking structure within the building uh, so that it's not exposed to the exterior of homes and the public street frontages, and so it, it makes that hiding. Um, and, uh, the setbacks and other regulations here reflect the fact that there will be at some point a subdivision created, um, that is consistent with this zone line, but it hasn't been made yet. So there really is, the setbacks from the, the building will really reflect that future property line, which is really just a property line that uh, defines ownership and wouldn't readily be perceived due to the facilities that are shared, like those parking lots that are serving the shopping center that come up to this. Um, there's access drives and other things, but, um, in terms of the intensity, there's no change in the intensity of use in this or, or the either, uh, or the Harrison-Turhune Zone. And this will fulfill, continue to fulfill the court order, um, but within the framework of a redevelopment. So these, uh, you know, these two redevelopment plans really represent the first two components of an overall redevelopment, comprehensive redevelopment of the shopping center district this North Harrison area. Um, and by wrapping these within the framework of redevelopment, it really gives the opportunity so that, um, the shared infrastructure and the commonality of various e- elements, infrastructure, open space, circulation, can be worked through, uh, this overall redevelopment strategy, and as, as, uh, as I understand it, the, the municipality is moving forward to, with a process to really look at the bulk of the shopping center in terms of redevelopment and renewal. It has not yet been, um, formulated yet or, uh, developed, but that, uh, over time, as it is, that these would be those first two components, which would ultimately fit together with that larger, um, that larger, uh, overall redevelopment strategy. So, um, those are the, the high points of, uh, of what we see here. I know that, um, Mr. Laplace has, has some thoughts on consistency with the, um, the, the master plan and the implementation of the master plan. He's issued a memo. Uh, I don't want to steal his thunder. Um, but if there are any questions that I can answer specifically about the, the ordinances and/or the redevelopment plans tonight, um, uh, I'm happy to do so.
Okay, well, what, why don't we go ahead and hear from Mr. Laplace and then, and then invite board members to pose questions to either of you?
Thank you, Chair. I, I think Michael did a great job of, um, discussing the two plans in context of our community master plan. I wanted just to highlight some of the reasons why staff feels that it is very much, these plans are in, in conformance with our plans here in Princeton. Some of the goals of the master plan include creating new locations and new opportunities for housing, and particularly affordable housing, but housing in general as well, and increasing the diversity and types of housing that's available in Princeton. That's another goal. The master plan also talks about directing new development where infrastructure already exists, and that's just common sense, but it's also smart growth principles and building where it makes sense and not building where it doesn't make sense, and parts of the, parts of Princeton where there aren't infrastructure to support development. So this very much fits that. You've got a location that's been developed for over 60 years, so. And it's served by transit, and it's, it's rather centrally located within our community. And then it also gives us the opportunity to not only meet some of our housing goals and to follow smart growth planning principles, but there's also the opportunity to make this site, the entire study area, much greener in terms of green building principles um, and more environ- environmentally sensitive building practices. So for those, all those reasons, probably the other ones that I haven't mentioned, uh, it seems very much in conformance with the master plan. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I was afraid my sound went out.
Well, it got a little garbly, uh, at least on my end, but it did not go out. I mean, the same happened once or twice with Mr. Sullivan, so.
Yeah, I think it might be the weather.
You're not the Lone Ranger, as they say. Do board members have questions for Mr. Sullivan or Mr. Laplace? I don't see any hands going up. Uh, Mr. Regan, is this a? Is this an item where we, um, need to hear public comment? We have, uh, opened for public comment, or is that not part of a consistency hearing? I'm, I'm sorry that I don't know the answer to that.
You know, that's really up to the, the board to decide whether it's necessary. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a requirement under the redevelopment law that there be a public hearing That there be a public hearing for this. So it's really at the prerogative of the board as to whether or not they want to open it. For any public comments or questions.
And and I used the wrong word. I said hearing. This is a consistency review. It's not, as you pointed out, it's not a hearing. So.
I do it too, but it's you're.
I was just gonna add, Chair, that this was introduced at a council meeting by the to the council, by the council. At May twenty-fourth, and it'll be the subject of the hearing before the council on June fourteenth. So certainly those are open public hearings where public comment will be taken.
Right, and you know what? That's that's a, I'm I'm glad you made that point and reminded us all of that. Because that is the appropriate venue for public comment. If any, if any members of the board disagree with that, you can shake your head or raise your hand or something. Okay, all right, then. So I'm not not seeing any. Anyone with questions for Mr. Sullivan or Mr. La Place? These are. Familiar areas, things we've talked about before. Would anyone like to make them? Oh, Mr. Texarney?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a quick question. So. I guess with these, I mean, tonight's ordinance referrals mainly about like whether it's consistent with the master plan. It's not really about. The redevelopment plans per se, but I was just curious in terms. Like the the design layouts that are in redevelopment plans. I guess those will be discussed in the council hearing. Or is are we able to talk about that right now?
Well, keep it, keep in mind that another part of this process down the road will be, it'll be, these projects will be coming back to the planning board for site plan review. So. We're kind of at the beginning of this.
Right, I'm I'm aware of that. But I I know that, you know, in the past, especially when it came to like putting these design concepts in the ordinance. You know, we were kind of questioning whether we should do that. And I mean, not that there's anything terribly wrong with the. Design concepts. I just kind of worry if like we might have the same issue with, you know, putting it in the redevelopment plan as sort of. Something set. Maybe.
Mr. Cohen, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I just want to comment on that. The way that we approached that in the previous discussions was that these are concept plans. They are not fixed. Plans and that they can evolve between now and when they come to the planning board as site plans. And in fact, if you look at the Avalon Site Concept Plan, for example, it actually has changed quite a bit. The footprint is similar, but the circulation and access is quite different than what came to us previously. And that was a result of some public input that they got. So these, these are just concept plans. They are not fixed.
Right. If I if I could chime in, this is Michael Sullivan. The concept plans really provide two things. They provide. A way to gauge. How to develop and make sure that something fits within the bulk requirements that we're talking about. It's really, it's really a way to gauge that, and it's really representative of that. It's it's more of a tool for how these, the zoning came together. And to make sure that it fits with what that existing, those two existing zones were.
Okay.
And I know that the, I believe I know that the council envisions a process for. Involving the public in the. Creating and massaging of the of the plans that will ultimately come to the planning board. Am I correct about that? Mr. Cohen, Mr. I mean Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so.
So what would that, what would the process? Be like? I'm not clear on that. Like, so it's gonna, is there gonna be like?
And then maybe we can.
Okay. All right.
Sinan?
Okay.
Yeah, that that that's a good point because I I want to be mindful of not sort of going down the rabbit hole. And moving away from the consistency review. This is a really important question, and I'm positive that it's gonna get a lot of attention at the at the council hearing. And and that is the body that needs to hear those, you know, make those decisions and.
Right. Okay.
Lay it all out. So would would someone like to move, ma- make a motion, one way or the other, with regard to. Finding these consistent with the master plan, Ms. Sax? Are you making a motion?
I would like to move and I would like to make a motion to find these consistent with the master plan.
I'll second.
Moved by Ms. Sax, seconded by Mr. Texarney. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you think we should have two separate motions for the two separate ordinances?
It probably makes sense to do that, just procedurally. I I that's a good suggestion.
Thanks, it is. Thank you. Yeah, so this is, this motion. Relates to ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And with regard to ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fifteen, I need a motion and a second.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Cohen. Mr. Oakman, did you, did I see you raise your hand? Seconded by.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Seconded by Jeffrey Oakman. Call the roll, please, Carrie.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And thanks, Mr. Regan.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have an application landmark at Princeton continued from March eighteenth of this year. But it goes back a lot further than that. For those of you who have been on the board for some time. This is preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan. For Snowden Lane. Forty-five oh two lot five. This is file number P twenty eighteen dash six oh seven P slash S P F. Mr. La Place, you want, if there are any questions related to jurisdiction and notice, proper notice, et cetera?
No, we're all in good shape as far as those items are concerned. And as you mentioned, this was a and part. It was before the planning board in two thousand and five and received approval for the creation of eight lots, seven.
Michael, Michael, if you could raise your right hand.
Okay, okay.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
Yep, and and just to elaborate on what Michael was saying, on the eighteenth, we actually accepted jurisdiction. So when now we're just having. And and then it was, the hearing was continued, so this is just a hearing.
Okay.
Jerry, I don't know. Did you want to talk about the legal aspect of it, that it was an earlier application that was appealed? I don't know if you want to. Or do you just?
I don't know. I'd be happy for you to to view that if you like.
Oh, well, I just, I I was just noting that this was before the board previously in two thousand and five, it was approved as a subdivision. For eight lots, seven of which would, each would contain a single family home. And the eighth lot was for environmental purposes drainage, and we left without a home on it. It was appealed by a neighboring property owner and. It was subsequently subsequently upheld. It received several required approvals from various environmental. Agencies.
Mr. La Place, we can't hear you now. Or is that just me?
Michael, can you hear us?
No.
No, I I can't hear me.
It's you and Michael is completely.
Michael, can you hear us?
No, we can't hear.
Mr. La Place?
It sounds great. Unfortunately, we can't actually hear it.
We we cannot hear you.
All right, when did I fade out?
Uh, pretty much.
A while ago.
Ending.
You 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 were saying that one of the neighboring property owners appealed.
Yeah, neighboring property owner appealed the previous approval, and then it was subsequently upheld. Some agency approvals were received for the site, and I believe one, the Delaware and River County Council Commission was one that was not obtained. And they're back before us with similar application. Jerry, I don't know if you want to talk about why they were, why it was determined that they had to come back for a new. An approval before the board.
Yeah. Yep, okay. As Michael indicated, this got an approval a long time ago, then there was a litigation and a lot of permits that had to be received. They came in at some point, and I can give you dates if you want them, where they asked for an extension of the approval. And that was granted, but with the condition it says you have to file the amended application by a certain date. I think it was June something of last year. Is that right, Michael? That sounds.
Yeah.
They did not do that. They filed afterwards and they asked that basically it be treated retroactively. As filing within time or further extend the 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 life of the earlier approval. And we, and the administrative decision was made by staff that the board had already acted. They had not come come within time. And then the application had to be treated as a new application. So this is being treated as a new application.
So it's probably best for us to get right into the application.
Do you have more to add, Mr.?
And then. Uh, no, not at this time. It's pretty straightforward. Eight lot, eight, seven house subdivision proposal. The applicant's ready to do a pretty thorough presentation, and I will jump in if there's anything that needs to be added to the presentation.
So I should quickly mention that I'm gonna be recusing myself from this hearing. So I mentioned that in the past.
Okay, so, good night.
And my colleague Brian Walker will probably be making comments on behalf of the P E C, so.
Okay.
As a as public, remember the public.
Okay.
Bye, everyone.
So who? Here representing the applicant?
That would be me, Neil Yaskin, who's actually.
Ready to proceed, don't you?
A participant.
Okay, Mr. Yaskin, yes, go right ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
That'll be good. Thank you. Again, my name is Neil Yaskin, the law firm of Colin and Dyckman here in Princeton. Although not literally so tonight, but. This is an application for preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan as both Mr. La Place. And Mr. Mueller stated for seven homes and an eighth lot, which will house a stormwater basin. I just want to elaborate a little bit on that history you just heard about. This was approved in two thousand. Five, the. Planning board placed a number of conditions in its resolution of December twelfth, two thousand and five. It's our expectation that many, if not all of those conditions will be imposed on this new approval. And we have no objection to that. I would also observe that Mr. La Place in his planning report noted that although this is a new application. That the board should take into consideration the precedent that it set when it approved this. Project in two thousand and five and then defended it in court. I was not alone in court. Mr. Mueller's law firm was next to me and we jointly defended the approval. So. I think rather than me get into the weeds on it, we have. Three witnesses definitely tonight, one possibly. The first of those witnesses is David Erickson, a professional engineer with Matrix New World Engineering. And he will be testifying on site civil engineering related matters. We have Christine Harrigan. Ms. Harrigan is a certified forester. Her area of testimony will involve the site conditions and the implementation of a woodland management plan on the property. Which she has been overseeing since two thousand and nine. And then Joel Schwartz, Joel Schwartz is a principal. In the company that owns and is developing this property, is also a licensed architect and a licensed professional planner. And he will be addressing issues within his purview as they arise. And he will also be offering our testimony on the one variance element that is involved in this. Application, which is. For the the building height setback variance. So before I call Mr. Erickson, I just want to emphasize the fact, this is a conforming subdivision. This is lots which are sized for the R two zone. They comply with the bulk standards of the R two zone. The setbacks for the seven homes comply with the setback requirements of the R two zone. So it is in every way a conforming subdivision, and you shouldn't be. Misled by the fact that we have applied for a variance from the building height setback. Component of the ordinance. As Mr. Schwartz will explain. All that that involves is what the houses themselves will look like. And where within the allowable building envelope they will sit on the property. Variance is not needed to meet the environmental restrictions that have been described as imposed on the property. And if you were for any reason to deny that variance, and we see a reason for that, but if you were to deny it. This project would simply go ahead. It would look exactly the same. The only difference would be in the architecture. And Mr. Mr. Schwartz can explain that to you. So what I'd like to do at this point is call David Erickson and have him sworn, Mr. Mueller.
Yes, Louise, you want to have the three witnesses sworn at the same time?
Yes, please.
Okay, so so I see Mr. Erickson is here, other two witnesses here as well, Neil.
They are.
I see their names, yes.
There's Ms. Harrigan. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. John. I apologize. We have a fourth potential witness, John Ryder, who's a professional engineer with Van Note Harvey. Will be called only if necessary. Mr. Van Ryder, Mr. Ryder's firm. Did the environmental permitting for this project and did some of the site plan engineering for the first iteration of the project. There's a, there's a flood hazard area approval and a weapon approval in place. Mr. Erickson will testify to them. If necessary, we'll call him Mr. Ryder. I apologize, John. So he should be sworn as well.
So if you could raise your right hand. Okay, if you, and he's here somewhere in this room. Okay, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give be the truth. All right, so sworn in. If you could each state your full name and spell your last name. Why don't we start with Mr. Erickson?
Christine Harrigan.
State your phone. Okay.
U C K S O N.
Okay, thank you.
John?
John Ryder, J O H N, R Y D E R.
Joel Schwartz, J O E L S C H W A R T Z.
Ms. Harrigan, we, we did not, um, get you before, I think, because there was some, um, garbledness happening. So why don't you, uh, say your name again and spell your last name for Mr. Muller.
Okay, Christina Harrigan, H A R R I G A N.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Muller, Dave, um, could you move a little closer to your microphone? Thanks. So, um, Mr. Erickson, by whom are you employed?
Matrix New World Engineering.
And what professional licenses do you hold?
I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Uh, would you give the board the benefit of your education?
Graduated from M J I T with a bachelor of science in civil engineering. I've been practicing as a professional engineer for over twenty years. I've testified at numerous planning boards across the state on applications ranging from single family homes to fifteen hundred unit residential subdivisions on commercial applications from individual fast food stores to two point nine million square foot regional commercial centers.
Madam Chair, we would offer, uh, Mr. Erickson as a, uh, expert in civil engineering in New Jersey.
We accept your qualifications, Mr. Erickson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Dave, I think the best place to start is with a description of the project. Have you prepared an exhibit, uh, which you will use to do that?
I have. If I can show my screen.
Carrie, if you could, um, bring up the colored site plan. Oh, David, it's your. Let me, just as a point of order, do we want to use the ones that we have or should we use the ones that Carrie has?
Well, they're identical. And if I use the one that I have, then I can point to things and zoom into things and give better exhibits.
That sounds good.
I understand that. Okay. I just want to make sure it's acceptable. Yes.
Well, as long as your, your testimony under oath is that it's identical.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask.
Yeah.
We'll mark this virtually as Exhibit A one. What's being put up?
Right now, all I see is a screen for, um.
Yeah, I know. We're waiting for it to come up.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Oh. You'll see it now.
Yeah, but we can't see.
Very small. There we go.
There we go. So, um, Mr. Erickson, before you start to describe what's here, uh, is this the same plan that is part of the plan set that we've submitted as part of this application?
It is.
It is? I can't hear you too well.
Yes, it is the exact thing.
Okay, thank you. So if you could, for the board and for the public, describe what it is we're looking at.
Uh, this project site is Lot Five and Block Forty-five or so and is in the R two zoning district of the former township of Princeton. It is located at the northwesterly quarter of the intersection of Snowden Lane and Van Dyke Road and is surrounded by eleven existing residential lots. Four of the houses are to the south and west on the other side of Perry's Brook on All Saints Road. Two of the houses are to the south on Van Dyke Road. One house is to the east across Snowden Lane. And the remaining four are to the north on Windy Top Court. Site consists of fifteen point zero one acres. It's generally wooded and has been maintained under a forestry management plan by certified foresters for a number of years. We are proposing subdivide Lot Five into eight new lots along a new public road to be known as Prentice Lane. One of these lots will be used for a stormwater management basin and the other seven will have single family homes built on them. The lots range from one point five acres to two point three six acres in size. So they all meet or exceed the one point five acre minimum requirement. They also meet or exceed all of the other bulk requirements in the ordinance. One. We are requesting variance relief tonight for the building height setback ratio. There will be planning testimony about this later tonight. The homes that are shown on the site plans are representative of the size and type of home that will be constructed. The actual home to be constructed will be customized for each homeowner and will be shown on the plans that will be submitted for building permit.
David, David, if I could just interrupt for a second, just to tell the board that one of the conditions of the two thousand and five approval uh, requires that each of these individual lots come to the town for a plot plan review. We agreed to that. The board asked for that and we agreed to that with the understanding that at this point where it's not known exactly what these houses are going to look like or where they're going to sit, that would be an appropriate procedure. So what Mr. Erickson is referring to. Sorry, Dave.
That's okay. These homes will be similar in size and scale to the existing homes surrounding this development. And we'll be in keeping with the one hundred or more existing homes in the, in this R two zone in this part of Princeton. The reason we are requesting variance for the building height setback ratio is so that the future homeowners can have a little more flexibility in architectural design and cycling of their homes. In designing this project, the project team chose to preserve more of the land than is required by any environmental regulation. About one third of the site is regulated in the form of wetlands, buffers and stream corridors, but more than half of the site is being preserved, which will help to limit runoff after the project is constructed. The granting of this variance will not increase the number of homes that can be built, the size of the homes, nor will it allow them to exceed the height limitation. It will only increase the architectural features that can be incorporated into each house. If this variance were not granted, the number of houses that will be built will remain the same. Only the architecture of the houses will be limited. We are proposing to construct a new Prentice Lane, which will be approximately nine hundred feet long with a twenty foot wide paved traveled way in accordance with the R S I S requirements for a rural street. Prentice Lane will intersect with Snowden Lane approximately three hundred fifty feet north of the existing intersection of Snowden and Van Dyke. We are proposing a fifty foot wide right of way, even though only forty feet is required by R S I S. And we are proposing a four foot wide sidewalk along the north side of Prentice Lane, even though none are required by R S I S. The town professionals have requested that the sidewalk be constructed with a five foot width and we will comply and revise the plan. The colored side circle at the end of Prentice Lane has been designed with non-tropical curb around the center island to facilitate movement of large vehicles and fire apparatus. The remainder of Prentice Lane will have six inch vertical Belgium block curbs. The driveways for all of the new houses will be located on Prentice Lane. So no new driveway will be on Snowden Lane or Van Dyke Road. The driveways and garages have been arranged so that all driveways and garage doors are oriented to the side property line in accordance with the request of the municipality. We have proposed a twenty foot five, twenty five foot wide right of way dedication for the expansion of Snowden Lane along with thirteen feet of road widening and new concrete curbs along Snowden Lane front of it. In addition, we are also proposing the construction of a six foot wide shared use meandering path along Snowden Lane in accordance with the Princeton master plan and as requested in the prior approval. We are requesting a variance from the illumination requirements for a local roadway in order to maintain the rural character of this area. This variance was suggested by town staff during the prior approval process because a lower lighting level was thought to be more appropriate in this area. And it was granted in the previous approval. We have proposed street trees along both sides of the entire length of Prentice Lane, except for a very short distance of the road crossing. These trees had to be eliminated to reduce carrion zone disturbance in the N J D E P permit application. We have provided extensive planting along Van Dyke Road and along Snowden Lane. And the forested areas that will remain in this area will provide additional buffering to these houses. We have also provided significant planting along the shared property lines with Lot One and Four to the south of our site, where disturbance close to the property line could not be avoided. The forested area that will remain will provide additional buffering to these blocks and to the other surrounding properties. Subject of stormwater runoff is familiar to most people today.
Hey, Dave, Mr. Erickson, can I interrupt you for a second?
Certainly.
Um, I just, before we move on to stormwater, I want to talk a little bit about these, uh, lands that you've mentioned that will be preserved intact. There are, there's a light green on this plan and a dark green on this plan. Could you describe the difference between the two?
I, I would actually prefer to use a different exhibit effect. So.
That would be fine.
This, this is the regulated, uh, in a minute. This is the regulated land exhibit that was submitted. It's identical to what was submitted to the township. It shows the wetlands.
Hang on. I would assume, Mr. Muller, that'll be a, a two.
Right, exactly.
And what is this?
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And could you describe, Mr. Erickson, what we're looking at?
So the, the dark green areas on the plan are the wetlands and stream corridors. The light green areas on this plan are the wetland and buffer. So these are the regulated.
Could you repeat that, sir? Mr. Erickson, could you, Mr. Erickson, could you repeat that? Could, we kind of got garbled for the, at least for maybe you got garbled for the, wow.
The, the dark green areas on this plan are the wetland and stream corridor. The light green areas on this plan are the wetlands and stream bucket. The gray that I'm putting my cursor on, that is our road crossing permit that we got. This gray down here is our stormwater outfall permit that we received. And then these two gray areas here are bridges, pedestrian bridges over the stream.
Are these, are these areas, um, now protected by recorded conservation restrictions?
Have they, I'm not sure that these have.
Well, I can tell you for. I can tell you for a fact that they, they are, but yeah.
Can you?
I'm just to the board to understand.
What is the title of that plan? I cannot read it.
Regulated land exhibit.
Thank you.
If you can, if you could, Mr. Erickson, do you have another exhibit that shows regulated and preserved land?
I do. We'll bring that up right now.
And this will be a three.
Thank you.
So this exhibit shows the additional areas that we have agreed to preserve on this site. And it results in the preservation of, of about fifty one percent of the wooded areas
Now, let me explain to the board. Let me explain to the board that in the, when this application was reviewed in Dupian, who was then your stormwater engineer and is still today your stormwater engineer and has reviewed this application, recommended that some additional forested areas be preserved undisturbed to further improve the water quality conditions on the site. Um, the applicant agreed to do that. So those areas you see are, uh, referred to as trade preservation areas. And they are likewise, uh, subject to conservation restrictions which were recorded in two thousand and five. And therefore those areas will not be disturbed going forward. Sorry, Dave, I've I've kind of dragged you away, but just to restate, so bottom line is, uh, approximately fifty one percent of the site will be preserved as wooded open spaces. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I keep interrupting you, so please go on.
I'm going to go back to the first exhibit if I may. And it, it's a nice segue, Neil, because the darker green areas on this map are those areas that were preserved in two thousand and five. So we, with this new application, we are preserving additional areas in perpetuity. The subject of stormwater runoff is familiar to most people today. It's an important topic of discussion, especially to the people who live along Harry's Brook. Our design of the Prentice Lane development has taken this into consideration and our stormwater management basin will reduce the stormwater flows that enter Harry's Brook from what is currently discharged from the existing wood site in accordance with N J D E P regulation. Project's compliance has been reviewed and confirmed by the town's stormwater consultant, Joe Spookin. We are also permanently preserving fifty one percent of the woods on this site, as you can see on the regulated and preserved land exhibit, which was shown prior. Uh, it is interesting to compare this to the regulated land exhibit. And you can see the additional areas that we are saving and that we agreed to preserve to further reduce stormwater generated by this development. When this project is completed, there will be smaller stormwater flows entering Harry's Brook than what happened from this site today.
How is that?
I'm sorry. Can I jump in with a question?
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, Mr. Erickson, the plan that showed the preserved areas showed the area around the bridges, the pedestrian bridges, as being preserved, what we're looking at right now. But the colored site plan did not show them in the darker green. Can you explain, uh, the discrepancy, please?
So if you look at the dash line that my pointer is pointing to right now, that is the darker green area from the, um, other preserved area exhibit. So you can see that the old preservation areas went around those walking paths. And if you compare the site plan, you can see that odd shape going around the walking path. So this area was not preserved previously. And our current approach to preserving the area is going to exclude those areas leading up to the bridges.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Coen?
Um, I, I'm not sure it does because I'm not sure how you construct those bridges without, I mean, those areas are going to be in the area of disturbance, correct?
The, the gray areas are part of our permit that we received from D E P to disturb wetlands and streams. The white area that leads up to the gray area. So that is a permitted activity to build that bridge within the wetland and across the stream. The white area, we are just not record a conservation reason on so you can actually get to the bridge.
And you're saying that the, the other plan, which has the the dark green area is smaller than what's shown? as preserved on this plan, but that's somehow, that's an old plan that's no longer pertinent, or you're saying that this is the current preservation plan?
What, what happened when we went back in for DEP permits? Areas of wetland increased. There was a decision to put a riparian zone along this stream corridor that did not exist back at that time. So the areas outside of where the old preservation areas are, are either riparian zone for the new stream corridor that's being protected or additional wetland buffers from the additional wetlands that were discovered. That's what caused the expansion of the old preservation areas to today's preservation areas.
Okay. Super clear.
Yeah.
If, if I could follow up, because, just pardon my dense, denseness. So A one, if you can go to A one, back to A one, Mr. Erickson. So that, this is not the current plan? This is the old plan?
This is the current site plan with the old regulated areas shown on it.
Okay, thank you. So just to clarify, those kind of trapezoidal areas you see where the, those foot bridges go in, and this water course, by the way, is kind of dignifies it to call it a water course. It's a couple of inches deep when it's wet, and when we were all out there last week, it was dry, but what you're seeing is bridges is really nothing more than laying a couple of two-by-sixes across across that, that ditch. So all that's needed to access it is that small area that you see. And and just to clarify something else, Mr. Erickson said, in two thousand and five, when this plan was approved, the Flood Hazard Area Control Act did not include the regulation of buffers which in flood hazard parlance are riparian zones. They exist today, and that's why there's a somewhat wider regulated area that we will preserve.
And those are shown on the site plan as well. This dashed line that I'm pointing to right now is that additional riparian zone for additional wetland buffers that we're talking about.
Well, and I the exact things that were pointed out by Mr. Cohen had also raised questions in my mind, which, I mean, we're one man's ditch is another man's headwaters stream. If you'll forgive the man reference. And but I, I guess I'll just wait until later on to ask questions about inviting people to walk into an, you know, to, to build any kind of a bridge into an area that is supposed to be permanently preserved and undisturbed.
Well.
So that, that's
Let me, let me, let me offer that now, so that you're not wondering about the these crossings are approved by DP as part of the permitting package, and the logic behind them was people should not be precluded from reaching their property, even though it's permanently preserved. There may be reasons to go back there. The reasons may include woodland management. There's no other way to get back there. So if, for example, you're going to hear from Ms. Harrigan that a lot of the trees on this property are ash trees. They're going to, they're going to die at some point. They're going to have to be removed, probably it can have to be removed. The only way to get back to those two areas is by that, those two foot bridges. That's why they're there.
Okay.
Um, okay, yeah, Neil. If the board chose not to permit those crossings, would that be a problem with the developer vis a vis DEP?
No, DEP is not obligated under the flood hazard approval. I mean, the applicant's not obligated to put something in, they have permission to put them in.
Okay.
So if the board were to say no, then that doesn't do anything to the DP approval.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, we keep interrupting.
No, I'm actually ready to move to another exhibit if you are.
What exhibit is that?
Plan comparison, so we can talk about changes.
Yeah, so that was my next question for you, which is, could you discuss the changes from the prior approval and the reasons for those changes?
So we, we prepared this exhibit, which again is identical to the one that was submitted to the township. The red areas on this plan show the previously approved subdivision site plan elements. The gray images on this plan show the current approvals. A current plan set that we have submitted for approval. So you can see that the houses where in the old approvals, each house had a unique shape. We have replaced that with just a representative shape of the house. All of the houses in our current plans that are the same, just to give you an idea. The road is identical. The cul-de-sac had to be extended further northwest to reduce the amount of disturbance in the riparian zone that did not exist during the prior approval.
Dave, could you zoom that plan in a little bit?
Sure.
And Mark, this is A four.
Thank you.
You can see that the is the same size and shape. We just had to move it further to the north and west to get out of this riparian zone. Because the DEP didn't want us to disturb all of that area in the riparian zone. The house shifted a little bit
So the purpose, so the purpose of that, so the purpose of that design change was to further minimize impacts to the flood hazard riparian zone?
That is correct. You can see that we labeled a couple of lots here. The red is the new lot size. I'm sorry, the red is the old lot size of two point four four acres, the new lot size of three point oh four, two point three six. The old lot size of three point oh five was one point five one. The new lot size is still one point five one. We moved this lot line to a different location because of that change with the cul-de-sac. This is the only lot that actually moved in size. All of the other ones are identical. What we'll preuse for the basin, again, because of the riparian zone up here. This was the outer limit of the old basin, the red line that I'm pointing to. This is the new limit of the basin, because we had to stay out of that riparian zone. One more change that occurred was to the sanitary sewer. We had originally planned to run the sanitary sewer along this red route down to an upgrade, updated, upgraded pump station off of Vol'thing Road. That would have required more environmental disturbance across Harry's Brook. Would have required the cutting down of more trees to accomplish that. We have actually, in the new plan, there is a sewer now in Snowden Lane that we are tying into. So that is how we eliminated
This was actually This was actually a significant change in the project, was it not?
Significant change, yes.
Yeah. The sewer, the sewer line in Snowden Lane was not there when this project was approved in two thousand and five.
Right.
That, I'm asking that.
The amount of, yes, it was, it did not agitate, it was constructed after that. But it reduced all the disturbance in the wetlands and stream corridors and reduced the elimination of many trees.
Could you discuss the changes to the stormwater basin itself?
The basin, because of the changes to the stormwater management rules, the basin required a different for stormwater management on this site. The original detention basin had a recharge filter bed. And we replaced that with a constructed wetland. The recharge filter bed, when we did additional soil testing, we found that the soils on this site are classified as desoiled and do not infiltrate well. So the recharge filter bed would not have functioned adequately and not nearly as well as a constructed wetland. The new basin will provide enhanced water quality to stormwater collected on site before it's discharged in Harry's Brook. The constructed wetlands are a much more suitable approach on this site. One change that did have to occur because of the reduced area of the basin. We did have to add the cane walls so that we could maintain the same amount of stewardage volume in the basin as we had before. We do not have any setback requirement, do not violate any setback requirements with any of the structures, the basin falls entirely within the required setbacks to the basin itself.
This, the stormwater design has been reviewed and approved by DP, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it's also been reviewed and approved by Mr. Scoopian?
That is correct.
Just let me ask you before we leave the stormwater basin. There were comments in several, I think in an engineering report, and maybe in the environmental commission report, asking about operation and maintenance of this basin. So this will be owned and maintained by a homeowners association, is that correct?
That is correct.
And has an O and M manual and operations and maintenance manual been prepared for the property?
The maintenance manual was prepared, was prepared for the conceptual basin design approved by DEP. We have since added all of the vegetation that will be in the constructed wetland. So the O and M manual has to be updated to reflect the current design. The type of basin and operation of the basin has been changed, it's just that there are more details added in the current basin that need to be reflected in the O and M.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I just mentioned that because we would anticipate as a condition of approval that, that the updated O and M manual will be submitted. But the, the current manual actually was submitted electronically to the town back in March. We just wanted you to know that you have it.
Okay.
Dave, are we done with this plan?
Yeah, the, the only other two elements, I don't think we actually said, the flood hazard permit was issued on November twenty eighth, two thousand and seventeen, and the freshwater wetland permit was issued on February sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, for this site. Both permits are valid five years.
Do those permits would those permits be the same ones you would apply for today under the updated state stormwater rule? Or is this conforming with an earlier standard?
The, this, the stormwater design for this project is not subject to the new state stormwater rules by virtue of those permits having been issued, but, I mean, you can ask Mr. Erickson about it. We've, we've talked about it and I, you'll find that the the design meets, pretty much meets the spirit of the, the new rules, you know, it breaks up stormwater flows, it treats it in the, in the manner that the new rules, but they are not, it is not subject to the new rules, that's, nor is it subject to the town's new stormwater ordinance, because the application was deemed complete prior to the enactment of that ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, do you want to, since that concern was raised, I mean, I guess the question I would ask you is if you were submitting this application today to DP would very much have to change under the new stormwater rules?
No, very, very little would have to change.
The constructed wetland design is something you find in the current BMP manual, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
What would have to change, just out of curiosity?
I'd have to I'd have to go through and analyze and just make sure that the classification of these soils on the majority of this site eliminated many of the requirements of the new stormwater rules.
Right.
So we don't have, don't have to recharge, that, a lot of the requirements of the new stormwater rules is related to recharge and the water quality. We may need to add a couple of swales here and there, but that, that's what I would have to look at with the new point system, but it's not the basin itself is appropriate and allowed under the new stormwater rules and by the level of treatment that's required under the new stormwater rules. It's just that the non-structural methods I would have to look at, to see if we needed a swell along the driveway instead of letting it just start directly through the road, things like that. But nothing
I think Mr. Scoopian will also be addressing this.
Good.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, it's Jim Purcell. May I be sworn in?
Yep, Jim, if you raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
So I swear.
I just want to put on the record that Mr. Scoopian won't be in attendance this evening, so he will not be able to provide any conforming or confirming evidence. However, I would like to just state for the record that we did not analyze this under the new stormwater rules. So that we cannot confirm whether or not what Mr. Erickson is saying is correct, and I think he just said he can't, he'd have to do further analysis to determine whether or not it meets our new stormwater rules. But I will verify that this was deemed complete prior to the enactment of our new ordinances and does comply with our, with the stormwater rules that were in place at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell.
Were we good on that? Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Dave, why don't we move on to trees? Were you done with these aspects of the project?
The only thing we didn't touch on was the lighting.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
We are asking for a variance for lighting. The, the only light sanction that we're proposing along tennis lane is up at the top of the cul-de-sac right here where I have my cursor. We are adding a light to the light pole on Snowden Lane. And then, of course, there will be house lights on each house, the homeowners control. But the, the light poles on this road, they're all too open, and since that does not meet the lighting requirements in the ordinance, we do need to request a variance for lighting levels along tennis lane.
And that, that variance was approved in two thousand and five, was it not?
It was.
And in fact, that, that variance was suggested at the, by the planning board at the time, was it not?
It was.
Thanks. Why don't we move on to talk about tree inventory and ordinance compliance? And just before we do that, I just want to, Madam Chair, put this in a context of your ordinances. Princeton has a qualitative standard and a quantitative standard for trees. The qualitative standard in section ten B dash two twenty-six B talks about the natural character of the landscape should be maintained insofar as practical and environmentally desirable by minimizing tree and soil removal. And that's one of the things that Mr. Erickson will be talking about. And then the quantitative aspect is the mitigation and compensation tables in the tree ordinance. And that is something we'll be deferring a little bit to Ms. Harrigan and to later in the presentation. We actually think that you can't quite do it yet with the information we have, but let's talk about trees. Dave, do you have an exhibit? That talks about this?
I actually have two. The first one I'm going to pull up. So this, again, is identical to the exhibit that was submitted to the planning board.
A five, Jerry?
Yep.
It's a modification of our tree location plan that was submitted in our site plan set, and all of these pieces of text and round circles are the individual trees that we located throughout the site. And all of these pieces of text and round circles are the individual trees that we located throughout the site. So we located trees, every tree within the clearing limit, the proposed clearing limit, and trees beyond the clearing limit. Because when we were out in the field, we didn't know where the clearing limits were.
So when you say, when you say every tree, is that every tree of a certain diameter?
Eight inches or larger.
And that's, that's per the ordinance, correct?
Per the ordinance. And these, these trees were located and identified by our principal landscape architect. There's a licensed, certified licensed architect that has been doing tree locations for twenty years. I've, I've worked with him on a thousand acre site in Jackson, where he located all the trees. He has extensive experience in locating and identifying trees.
Mr. Erickson, uh, is this exhibit, are these changes from what was submitted in the plan set? Or is this part of the plan set showing changes from something previously?
This, this is a plan sheet from the plan set that had these green and red lines added to it.
Okay, thank you.
What, what the red line, and I, I would like to show a different exhibit, Neil, if I can, just to.
Yes, please.
Do these plans that you're showing reflect information that both our landscape architect, uh, Mr. Dobremilski and the Shade Tree Commission both said was needed in order to evaluate? Um, you know, it, it does reflect those, reflects tree clearing information?
It does. He's, Mr. Erickson's about to testify.
Okay.
So there, there's a.
All right, thank you.
There's a little bit of confusion.
Dave, can you zoom, can you zoom that in a little bit?
Sure. And there, there's a little bit of confusion right now that we haven't addressed yet. Um, we submitted a tree chart that identified all of the trees within clearing limits. The tree chart did not identify all the trees on site, but they did identify all of the trees within the clearing limit. So I.
And that's trees with a caliber of eight inches or greater?
Eight inches or greater, yes.
Okay.
So we, we prepared this plan to show the limits of disturbance that would be required to build the roads and the stormwater basin, but not any of the houses. And the reason we did this is we know that all of the trees within these zones have to be removed. In order to build this infrastructure, we have to remove all the trees. As we move on to the individual lot, we may be able to save trees based on the unique designs of each individual house. So that is why this exhibit was prepared. And we also have prepared additional charts of the trees within these individual areas. And it, it gets very complex because in our tree location and identification exhibit, we also identified dead and diseased trees. And then we also identified all of the ash trees on site that will be testified later to. Because if the Emerald Board is already on the site, all of those trees are going to die. So we came up with a term called viable tree. And within the basin lot, we need to remove seventy-one viable trees. Now, from, from the, um, number of trees within the basin lot, we excluded ash and dead and dying trees that are here. But there are seventy-one viable trees that will need to be removed. Within the area of the road improvements, there are a hundred forty-nine trees, viable trees that will have to be removed to build this infrastructure.
How many was that again?
One hundred forty-nine.
How many within the basin?
Seventy-one.
Thank you.
And we, we estimate that on the site, there are between thirteen and fourteen hundred trees on the site currently. So the, the road is not even ten percent of the trees. The basin is around five percent of the trees that will be removed. And as I said, we're not sure about the houses once we come in with individual plot plans. We're going to try to preserve as many trees as we can.
And how many, I'm sorry, uh, how many trees on the, on the site?
Between thirteen hundred and fourteen hundred.
Again, that's, and that's eighteen, uh, eight inches or greater in terms of.
Eight inches or greater. They don't count all the smaller ones that are currently growing. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Dave, were you able to estimate, subject to the conditions you just talked about in the, where the houses are going to be built? Were you able to estimate the number of trees that might have to be removed as part of that process?
Maximum is two hundred seventy-one viable trees, maximum.
I didn't quite catch that. I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
The, the maximum number would be two hundred, two hundred seventy-one viable trees. If we cleared to the clearing, cleared every tree within the clearing limits shown on the current set of plan.
And again, without going into excruciating detail, every one of these trees that's to be removed has to be compensated for in some way under the township's tree ordinance. Um, at a ratio of, uh, one to one or more, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you want to add any testimony regarding, uh, the tree impacts?
No, I think from an engineering perspective, I think that's probably everything I wanted to cover.
Okay, um, I think what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is I do want to go over uh, the engineer and zoning officer's March eighth letter. But since we're talking about trees, I think if we move to Ms. Harrigan at this point. And, uh, that would give greater flow to the testimony. So I'd like to call Ms. Harrigan.
Okay.
Well, I'm, and I'm sorry, do you want to save questions for Mr. Erickson?
Um. Let's see, while I can't see the whole board, is, is anybody have a pressing question for Mr. Erickson that?
Dave, could you zoom out so they can see the entire board?
I will have to, of the entire board. I thought you meant the planning board.
I do mean the, you mean the planning board.
Dave, stop tearing the screen. Stop tearing my screen.
Louise, just so you know, you can actually take your cursor to the side of the screen, the side of where the screen is. And, and then push the thing over manually and then you can see everyone's square.
Thank you. Did not know that.
Yeah.
Um, yes, life is a learning curve. Thank you. That's helpful. Um, so are there any, any questions for, any pressing questions for Mr. Erickson before we hear from Ms. Harrigan, who is an expert on forestry? I mean, the sort of segue question that I have, at least I think it's a sort of segue question is that it's your testimony that even after removing this seventy-one plus a hundred forty-nine plus potentially two hundred seventy-one trees and and, uh, installing the impervious cover that goes where all but seventy-one of those trees are. The runoff from the property, even taking into account the loss of a bunch of additional trees, ash trees, is going to be less after these houses are built than before, than, uh, that, less runoff, uh, than, than there is right now. That, that's the sort of question I want to get at, whether you want to answer it now or wait for Ms. Harr, Harrigan to sort of.
Right, I, I can't answer. And I'm, I'm going to get a, a little bit technical if I may. Our, our analysis of the existing flow that leave this site was based off the soil surveys that showed this site had C soil.
C as in?
Correct. See, see, the, the classifications of soils go from A to D. A and B starts to get more silty, D is a clay soil that doesn't infiltrate much water. So a site with C soils generates less runoff than a site with D soil. Our analysis of this site for the existing flow was using the C and D soils from the soil survey. And we did our reduction analysis based off those flows. We, we are sending less rate of water to Harry's Brook than those flow generations show. When in reality, if we analyze this site with the D soils that we now know are there, it would be even further reduction to the flow.
So it's not a, just so I understand, it's not an overall reduction in the water that leaves the site? It leaves the site more slowly and therefore does not contribute to flooding? So that the, the rate is slowed down, but not the volume?
That is correct.
And then the other difference between the existing condition as it gets treated by running through the, um, the constructed wetland.
Right, for, for water quality. Mr., Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, this is a fairly minor point, but I don't think I heard, uh, Mr. Erickson address it. The landscape consultant, the municipality's landscape consultant had recommended a closer spacing of street trees. And I was wondering if that's a, a condition that you're willing to abide by.
We will. We, we also recognize that, um, there was a requirement in the prior approval for larger trees along Van Dyke, which we are willing to do. And we're willing to do additional bufferings in discussions with the landscape, your landscape consultant as well. We, we would like to add a lot of trees to this site.
But there's no plan, uh, Mr. Purcell?
I, I have a, a stormwater question comment to make, but if you wanted to go with, if you're still talking about trees, okay. Um, Mr. Erickson, um, uh, you had clarified for me that the stormwater runoff was based on a specific square footage of impervious area on each of the residential properties. Can you put the, can you tell the board what those numbers were? And I think a cor, a corollary to that is, um, I, I wonder how the potential property owners will know that they can't exceed that without providing their own onsite stormwater runoff in order to conform to our ordinances.
I think we would be willing to accept the condition of affordable, limiting these areas to, uh, the houses shown on these plans are thirty-seven hundred square feet. And the patio areas behind all the houses are one thousand one hundred twenty square feet. So the, the total impervious area for the house and the patio is four thousand eight hundred twenty square feet.
But then you, you have the driveway also, right?
I'm sorry?
You have the driveway also.
The driveways are not going to change substantially. I did not give that. I can tell you what the driveways are. But the houses, and I'll, I'll pull up the site plan again. I have, share my screen. May I share my screen? So you, you can see that we've located the houses wherever we could so that the property owners have a backyard. So the length of the driveways are not going to change much. The area outside the garages are probably going to get smaller rather than bigger. But we, we made them exactly the size. These, these are three-car garages. So I, we, oh, we did not address the driveway issue because we don't see them changing as much as the shape of the house and the shape of the patio well. But I can certainly provide those areas of these driveway if the board prefers.
But Mr. Erickson, you considered the area of those driveways in your calculations?
Yes, they, that those driveways, the sidewalks, the road, all impervious areas were calculated and routed separately with a shorter TC test to get to the basin quicker.
Your earlier, um, image that showed the older plan in concept plan in, in red and the newer one in gray. Um, it looked to me as if the houses envisioned in the two thousand and five plan are smaller. Um, is that, is that accurate or is that some kind of, uh, optical illusion or misunderstanding on my part?
No, I, I think it's accurate. I think in the last sixteen years, um, the types of houses that are desired on these types of lots have grown in size.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
And the thirty-seven hundred square feet, that's, that's the first, that's a footprint.
That's correct.
Are there other questions from board members for Mr. Erickson?
He will be coming back.
Okay.
Right, yes, right, right. I mean, the board, I, I take it, Louise, as our usual practice, will also, uh, one of the witnesses there after the applicant has finished his presentation, its presentation. So the board can ask any further questions at once.
Uh, yes, and so that, um, the experts might answer questions posed by members of the public as well.
Yes, right. So if we could now, I could, if I could call Ms. Harrigan, I'd like to do that.
Yes, please.
Dave, could you take that plan down?
Oh, true. I thought maybe she would want to use it.
Uh, well, let me, let's find out. Christine, do you want to use that plan?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay. So you've already been sworn, Christine, um, Christina, I apologize. By whom are you employed?
Uh, Gracie and Harrigan Consulting Foresters.
And what is it that you do there?
Uh, I'm the vice president. I've been a consulting forester with the, uh, with the firm for over thirty years. Uh, I'm also a DEP approved forester and a, uh, I'm approved, uh, I'm a certified forester with the Society of American Foresters.
Um, could you explain to the board, before I qualify you as an expert, uh, what a woodland management plan is and what a certified forester does?
A woodland management plan is a guiding document, uh, for a property, uh, for a property owner. Uh, for, uh, stewarding their land for managing the, uh, the property in an ecological manner. Uh, the, the plan, uh, has everything from objectives to description of soils, uh, history of the property, uh, description of the, uh, vegetation on site. And, um, you know, discussion about best management practices and, um, management, um, uh, goals and objectives and, and, uh, application for typically a ten-year period.
And you've prepared a woodland management plan for this and other properties?
Yes, our firm, uh, assists, uh, over a thousand, um, landowners in, uh, northern New Jersey. And we help manage over thirty-six thousand acres of forest.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to offer Ms. Harrigan as an expert in woodland management.
We accept your qualifications. Thanks.
So if you could, Ms. Harrigan, um, testify in narrative fashion as to your involvement with this site. When did that begin?
Yeah, we began in, um, July of two thousand and nine. I met with, um, uh, Mr. Schwartz at the site, um, to review the property with him. Um, we were retained to do a ten-year forest management plan on the property, uh, which was completed in September of two thousand and nine. And, um, was approved by the New Jersey, uh, DEP, uh, following the submittal of that plan. The, uh, the, uh, uh, the development of the forest management plan was in keeping with the, um, farmland assessment program. And, uh, in, in, uh, And in, in keeping with that plan as well, we periodically met with the property owner to assist with the implementation of the plan by marking and identifying trees that needed to be thinned because they were dead, dying, deformed, or diseased. We, we initially did some tree marking in January of 2011. And then following that site visit, the property was impacted both in August of 2011 and also in 2012 by hurricanes Irene and Sandy, which sort of changed the direction of management from a typical general thinning of, as I had described, dead, dying, deformed, and diseased trees to salvaging trees that had been severely damaged by storms. You know, we had continued beyond that time. We met with, with the property owner in March of 2013. We also did some additional tree marking in 2015. We continued to update the plan as needed as, as conditions changed and, you know, objectives of the owner changed. We, we met again onsite in June of 2019 to discuss the development of a second 10-year forest management plan. And that plan was completed in August. And the, that was also approved by the New Jersey Forest Service.
And you mentioned at one point, ash trees. Could you discuss the species composition of these woodlands a little bit?
The property is primarily dominated by white ash and red maple. You know, it varies throughout the site there, but there are areas of the site that are almost 50% white ash and some areas that, that range up to about 37% in red maple. The woodland developed from former farm, farm fields or pastures approximately 60 to 75 years ago. The, unfortunately, the ash trees have been pretty severely impacted by emerald ash borer in recent years and probably before that, it probably, some of those trees had probably been declining due to ash yellows disease. So there, when we did the inventory in August of, of 2019, we observed quite a few dead ash trees, quite a few declining trees. And unfortunately, that has only continued as time has progressed since, since 2019.
The, you mentioned the farmland assessment program. So that's my understanding that if a certain amount of cordage is sold every year, that that qualifies for farmland assessment?
It's not typically based just on, on volume of wood. It's really based on whether or not you're actively devoted to agriculture, that you're, that you're following a forest management plan, that you're actively working to promote the growth and health of the forest and that you're generating income from the sale of agricultural products. So in that case, yes, the sale of cordage does occur. And on this property, there's been an average of, you know, at least several quarts of firewood sold every year.
So the woodland management activities that have taken place over the past 11, 12 years, I guess, have been under your supervision?
Yes.
So the reason I ask is there comments, comment was made both in the town planners' report and the engineers' report, that tree clearing seemed to be in anticipation of development. Is that an accurate statement?
No, the, the, the tree work that was done on the property was in accordance with the 10-year forest management plans that we developed.
Okay, thank you. And then just very briefly, assuming that the board approves this application, there will be an obligation under the town's ordinance to plant replacement trees. And I assume that you will be involved in that process?
I'm not sure if I will or I won't, but I, when we were onsite, I, last week, I thought perhaps it might be of interest that there are some nice young trees developing on the property. There's some sapling-sized trees that may want to be considered as, as somehow protected so that that could be part of the, the replacement in the sense that these are trees that are already established and growing well on the site. So, yeah, typically, my involvement on these properties is, is for assisting in forest management itself. Planting trees might be under a different.
But your, your point is a good one, that forest management, in this particular case, could and should be an element of mitigation and compensation?
It could be, yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, I have nothing further from Ms. Harrigan?
Mr. Cohen looks like has a question. Are there, and anybody else, as soon as he finishes, raise your hand, okay? Go ahead, David.
So, so the question is just, once the subdivision occurs and properties are developed, I assume that the forest management program would be discontinued since there would no longer be a farmland qualification at issue? Is that, is that the case?
That's correct.
There other questions for Ms. Harrigan from board members? Okay, well, of course, I have one or two. I am curious about your, your thoughts about forest stewardship on this property, given how many ash trees are being lost. I believe our ordinance does not require replacement for the ash trees. And, you know, a great many of them will be lost and create areas that invite invasive species and that kind of thing. And I'm just curious about your thinking, whether there might be a stewardship plan created that protects the integrity of the forest as it regenerates? Do you, do you see what I mean? I guess I'm asking for your opinion about that and your.
Yeah, I think there would be a wonderful opportunity for the, you know, future landowners for re-establishing trees. The, it's very unfortunate that the, you know, that the ash trees are succumbing to the emerald ash borer. And unfortunately, there are, you know, there are an abundance of non-native and invasive species on the site already. And, you know, the, the current owner has worked to, to control those invasive species. That's part of what the forest management plan had called for. And so there was some pretty, pretty big efforts to control some of the invasive species. There was a very heavy cover of Amyr honey suckle and some other, you know, multiflora rose and Japanese barberry. And so there, there has been a big effort to, to control those invasive species. But I think the real answer is, is planting, you know, planting new trees, planting trees that are adaptable to the site. Typically, when we're doing reforestation, we're using, you know, very small trees. We're using bare root, either seedlings or saplings, because they're going to adapt to the site a lot easier. Obviously, you know, whatever your ordinance is, is probably dealing with replacing larger caliber, caliber trees that need to be tended to. But when you're reforesting a larger area, you want to get trees planted that are going to be able to take care of themselves relatively quickly. And then you're planting larger numbers. However, you know, that may be impractical because of the deer pressure that would, that would be from the area. You know, you'd have to protect anything that you planted from deer.
Yeah. Okay, that's interesting and helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I may clarify, Jim Purcell, we do require that ash trees are, are replaced at a 10% ratio. So for, for every 10, at least one gets planted, not as an ash tree.
That's good to know. I, I was, I was mistaken about that. Thank you for making that clear.
Madam Chair, do you want to take a five-minute break?
Yes, that is a good idea. And you have two more experts or one?
Just one. We're going to have Dave Erickson come back to go through the engineering and zoning letter and then Mr. Schwartz.
Okay, so it's 9:32. We will reconvene at 9:37.
Thank you.
See you then. Thank you. Mr. Oakman, are you back yet? Well, I don't want him to miss any, any testimony, so. Sorry, but let's wait a minute.
That's okay. We don't want him to miss it either.
Just a heads up, Mr. Yaskin, that we will, will enforce our hard stop of 11:00 PM.
Understood.
Want to make sure you and your folks know that.
Understood.
Okay, Mr. Oakman is back now.
Okay, great. Mia, are you there too? Yay, okay. Let's proceed.
What I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is have Mr. Erickson back just to address a couple of matters in the March 8, 2021 letter, was actually a memo from Mr. Purcell and Derek Bridger to the planning board. I apologize. The personal of Purcell.
Purcell.
Purcell, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Dave, do you have a copy of that letter?
I do.
Sorry, I was muted, but I do appreciate the Irish, the Irish pronunciation sometimes.
I would say you're welcome, except I didn't know that was the Irish pronunciation.
As well you should, Mr. Purcell.
So, Dave, if you could turn to page four of Mr. Purcell's March 8 memo. I'm just going to read the following comment. It's comment one under landscape. "The tree identification and condition survey is incomplete. It doesn't indicate the status or license of the professional responsible." So again, just for the record, would you state the name of the person who actually conducted the tree survey?
William Reimer. He's our principal landscape architect. And he's a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey and New York.
And then a little further down, it said, it talks about three sets of data. One is for trees that have to be removed. Actually, the first was removed pursuant to the woodland management activity. And I don't know that Ms. Harrigan quantified that. Madam Chair, if you want that number, we can, or Mr. Purcell, if you want it, we can have it, have her testify to that. Then the tree removal necessary to construct the infrastructure and improvements. And you testified to that, Dave. And then finally, I want to ask is if you were referring to the fact that you expect a further review. This letter says trees on individual lots should be evaluated based on the actual homes to be constructed on these lots and the tree loss associated with that. Is that what you were referring to?
It is.
So that would mean that that, that number actually gets calculated at a later point in time?
And it makes sense to do that because you'll also be able to identify the replacement trees that would be located on each individual lot at that time.
And I would just remind the board that that was the condition of the 2005 plan to which we readily agreed.
And to, to address the question you raised a couple of minutes ago, I think what I would like, I'm assuming the board would like to understand the, the number of trees or the, however it's gauged, removed that occurred with the woodland management activity. That was asked for by Mr. Dobromilsky and repeated in the, in Mr. Purcell's memo. And I, and so I think it's appropriate for us to get that number.
I'll just preface Ms. Harrigan's response by saying it's not a requirement of your ordinance. That's why the plan is a state plan. But I'm sure, I assume, Christina, that you have some idea of what that number is.
The number that I marked over the last 12 years is 108 trees. The, there may have been more than that though, because there was salvage of storm damage from Hurricane Sandy and Irene. And then also anytime, you know, a dead or a dead tree comes down, that may, may not have been something that we marked. But, but I personally marked 108 trees. Those trees ranged in diameter from, you know, four inches and up until, you know, probably about 14 inches or so in diameter, maybe occasionally a larger tree.
Okay.
That, that was a, that was a comment of Dan Dobromilsky, our landscape architect, who, who performs these reviews for us. So if, if I may ask Dan to be sworn in and, and ask if that is satisfactory to him, not satisfactory to me.
Dan, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to, to give is the truth?
I do.
Good. Looks like you're at a very nice place, actually. You somewhere in the Caribbean or?
I think that's actually in Florida.
Okay.
And so the, the information that was provided was very helpful. I appreciate that. And I think the clarifications that were offered with all that testimony is very helpful. I hopefully it was helpful in the board, with the board, if you're going to be crafting any conditions around the existing tree clearing and what mitigation is necessary. Hopefully, all that testimony helped. It helped me understand, a better understanding of what's going on and what has gone on.
The 108 trees that have been marked, I mean, what, what kind of trees are these? I guess I missed that. I'm sorry.
They, they ranged from dead, dying, deformed, diseased trees, trees that, you know, had some type of injury, but consistent with what's growing on site now, probably primarily ash, some maple, some Norway maple, which is a non-native and invasive species. Just typically trees that we didn't think were going to survive the long run. Just typically trees that we didn't think were going to, uh, survive the long run. You know, we're, we're managing for the long run and ones that have been overtopped by other trees are not getting adequate sunlight. Um, along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
And those are the, those are the trees that you used for, to, to sell as firewood? I forget the word you used before. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Cord, cordwood is what we said. It's just cords of firewood.
Cordage, cordage. That's what I couldn't remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, well, that was, she was responding to a question of yours. I assumed it was answered.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Christina.
Uh, before, Mr. Dobromilsky, before you turn your picture off, um, are, are there any other concerns that you still have or questions that were raised in your memo that have not yet been addressed by either the engineer or Ms. Harrigan?
Um, I think ultimately the, the, the question I'm going to have that, that's, it's not clear is what will happen to the individual lots in the conservation areas where ash trees die? And the individual property owners will now be responsible for dealing with that, both removal and or how do they manage that? And how does that information get conveyed to somebody before they buy the lot?
Well, you have put your finger on a huge important question.
That's the biggest question in my mind.
There, but there's a presumption in Dan's comment that this information has to be conveyed to the homeowner. Once the, once the property is subdivided, the woodland management plan ceases to exist. Uh, and neither the state nor Princeton has a requirement for affirmative woodland management on a property. If you were to say to these property owners or to say to this developer, you're going, as a condition of this approval, we're going to require woodland management on your property, um, you would have to require that of every other property owner in the town. I, I don't think, I don't think you can do this.
Yeah, and I, I.
I don't think that's what I was asking, so I apologize for that. The use of the word woodland management was confusing. What I was more talking about was landscape management, but how does it, how does a property owner buy a piece of property with conservation restrictions on it related to trees that are dying and then have the responsibility to manage that property? With what knowledge are they going to be brought to them to deal with that? Managing from a point of view of not having trees fall down in soil or road all over the place?
Well, but that's exactly my point. The conservation restriction does not impose an affirmative obligation on, on this property owner or on any future property owner to manage the land. It only says you can't clear the trees, uh, except for trees that are cleared pursuant to some rational reason, like, like clearing ashes. That's what you can't do. They can't go in and expand their backyards. But if there's an ash tree in the backyard that falls down, uh, nobody can make that property owner go in there anymore than you can make any property owner in town do that. We, we've asked ourselves, we've asked ourselves the same question, and it would be nice if that could be addressed, but that's beyond the power of the town to do. I'm not sure I agree with that, um, for a conservation area, particularly given the circumstances we're talking about, where there could be substantial devastation through, primarily through the emerald ash blower, uh, bore of, um, the conservation areas on an individual lot. And I think that's something that the board needs to talk about some more. I think that we both need, Jerry, to go back and read the conservation restriction. It's a tree save plan. Um, and, and that, that's all. It means you can't cut trees down. It doesn't mean you have an affirmative obligation to manage the land. And by the way, in terms of property owners knowing, in response to Dan's question, conservation easement is part of the deed. So they know, they know it's there. But the conservation restriction does not impose an affirmative obligation to manage the land. But, but that's a restriction that, that's one that you crafted, that, that your, your client crafted. I mean, it's not that it came from a third party source and it's mandatory. That's correct. Yeah. So to say, to say that the conservation restriction doesn't require it, I don't think gets one very far down the road when you've created the conservation restriction yourself. And the question is, what's the power of the board to impose restrictions given these kind of circumstances? And I don't think it's quite as clear cut, Neil, as you think it is.
Or to provide guidance on responsible reforestation activities that are permitted within a conservation deed restricted area. And, um, you know, whether that's guidance or require, you know, or, or a set of requirements.
Well.
Don't know, but I mean, I, I don't expect for us to completely solve that question right now, but it is an important one to address.
It is, it is an important one, but by, by way of analogy, I regularly write and record conservation restrictions for wetlands. Um, if those wetlands disappear due to a change in hydrology, which frequently happens, that property owner has no affirmative obligation to restore the wetland. The purpose of conservation restrictions is to preserve a status quo, and if nature changes the status quo, then that's beyond the scope of the conservation restriction. By the way, I don't disagree with you that it's, it would be nice if it was, um, considered. I, I'd be curious. I know, for example, next door at Windytop, there's a significant area of woodlands, uh, that's subject to a conservation restriction. Does that homeowners association have an affirmative obligation to manage those woodlands? Because if they don't, then you can't make my client do it.
Me, it starts with the first disclosure, the idea that these property owners should have some type of disclosure indicating that there is a knowledge that this condition exists and that there is changes that are going to occur on this property, are occurring on this property, and that they are going to take on the responsibility of managing when they purchase this property, whether they like it or not.
But that's.
Now have that knowledge, maybe.
But that's not what, that's not what the conservation restriction says.
I, but is it, and is it unreasonable for this board to impose a condition saying that disclosure has to be made?
A disclosure? I don't think it's unreasonable to say that a disclosure has to be made, the language of which is agreed to by Mr. Mueller and myself.
Well, I think it starts with that, and then it talks about what, uh, Louise was starting to get to was the idea of suggestions, at least on how that might have to be managed, and whether that is permitted under the conservation area or not, and what guidance is required in order to do that.
Disclosure is not a problem. We would have to discuss what it is that's being disclosed, but again, an ash tree doesn't know if it's in a conservation area or not. It doesn't know if it's in a tree save area. If it's going to fall down, it's going to fall down, and that's a problem that's common to every homeowner in, in town that has ash trees on their property. They all have to deal with it. These property owners, will they have more ash trees than the average person? Yes. But I, I'll go back to what I said a minute ago. I don't see how, how you can possibly impose a requirement like that on a private property owner, when, if you didn't impose it on Windytop. I just don't see how you can do that. Cause they've got ash trees that can be falling down left, right, and center.
At the time that that was approved, that, that knowledge was not known.
I, I actually doubt that very much.
I don't.
I don't either.
But.
Anyway.
Bottom line is, bottom line is, we don't have a problem with an agreed to, an agreed upon disclosure. But the woodland management plan, it ceases to exist. The tree save restriction continues. We recorded that back in two thousand and five.
And I, I think the word woodland management was wrong. It should have been a reforestation management plan or what's going to happen for that property afterwards. I, I don't believe, I mean, these lots aren't big enough to actually do woodland management in terms of agricultural, uh, tax exemptions. So what it comes down to is.
No, no, you're right. It doesn't qualify for tax. Let me ask you, let me ask you this question or make this suggestion. What if my client went in as a condition of approval and cut down every ash tree in the tree save areas?
I don't know if they'd be permitted to do that in their permit. That's the question. The question is, what is, what are you allowed to do and what are the future owners allowed to do? And who has a responsibility to let that new owner know what they're, what they're allowed to do, what they should do now that you know this condition exists?
Well, well, you just said two completely different things, Dan. What they're obligated to do and what they should do. The, this, the, the board can't tell people to be good citizens. If somebody's not obligated as a matter of law to do something, this board can't make them do it. We, we, I said, I said several times, and I'll say it again, we'll agree to a disclosure. Uh, and beyond the fact that the deeds already have, uh, the recorded conservation restrictions on them in the same way that the, the, the lot up in the corner has a, that's the lot closest to a Snowden Lane, that in the backyard has a, has a wetland conservation restriction. If those wetlands, the, the, the hydrology that supports that water course is kind of suspect anyway because it has to do with what goes on on the other side of Snowden Lane. If that hydrology ceases to exist and those wetlands go away, that property owner has no obligation to do anything about that.
And I, I don't think, I don't want to be argumentative. I think what you're talking about is a hypothetical unknown versus a known. And I think ultimately maybe the, to cut to the point is what would make sense on these properties is to have someone offer the homeowner something that describes how to manage the transition of a failing ash forest in a conservation area to be transitioned into a healthy forest of species that are not going to succumb to disease and problems.
We would agree. We would agree that that's reasonable.
And your forester offered some suggestions that are very usable, but probably be, could probably offer more detailed suggestions for each lot that probably aren't very costly, costly in using saplings and things of that sort, as she described. And I think that, to me, is a reasonable approach that is also, uh, responsible. Um, and that's what it comes down to.
Well, Dan, let, let me, let me clarify this, because when you spoke a moment ago, I mean, the, the two key things, um, were you want the, um, the owner to know, to know what the existing conditions are, what the expected future conditions are. Okay. No problem with that. I don't think Neil has, has a problem with that, but it's what the owner can do. And I guess Neil doesn't have a problem with that either, and what the owner must do, and that's where the issue lies, right? Correct.
Right, and I wasn't, I didn't say must. If you notice, I said should.
Yeah.
Well, it's, I, I think there's a, I, that's, that gets for the, you know, the legal end as you're talking about. I'm, I'm just saying that from my point of view, there's going to be a problem on these lots.
And we agree, and I think that the way it's been formulated by Mr. Mueller is perfectly acceptable to my client. In terms of a can do, but not the most of.
Correct.
Um, okay, so I'm sure we'll, um, return to that at some point.
Um, so if I can proceed there, just very quickly, Dave.
Get a little bit ideas.
Pardon me?
I think our chair is having some connection difficulties.
Oh.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. And now you froze.
Okay. Yeah, sorry.
We good?
Yes, we're good.
Um, Dave, I just want to go back and cover something that we collectively forgot to deal with. Um, that was the request for a checklist waiver for the seven percent slope mapping. Uh, staff have actually recommended that that waiver be granted, but I just want to clarify why it was requested.
Uh, it was requested for a couple of reasons. One, there's two, two places in the ordinance that call out the two different slope designations, um, seven percent, and I believe it's fifteen percent. So and then the, the second reason is that seven percent, in my opinion, is an unreasonable requirement when handicap access can be provided at up to eight percent. So seven percent is not an extreme slope, in my opinion, or, or I believe in the industry opinion either. So that's why we're requesting the waiver.
But again, staff recommended that that waiver be granted, correct?
Yes.
And that's just a submission waiver, right? We're not talking about any design waiver here.
Submission waiver, that's correct.
Yeah, correct. And then finally, Dave, on page ten of eleven, there's a list of nine conditions of approval. And to the best of your knowledge, are all of these conditions acceptable to the applicant?
Uh, yes. Yes, we discussed them.
Okay. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes, uh, my questioning of Mr. Erickson.
Okay, you know, I just noticed another thing that I marked in that, uh, same memo. It's on page seven, and it talks about, um, a twenty-five foot right of way dedication for expansion of Snowden along with the thirteen, along with thirteen feet of road widening and concrete curb on Snowden. Are you saying you're widening Snowden by thirteen feet along the entire frontage of this property?
Sorry, Louise, I, 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 could you tell me where you are? I didn't quite.
I'm on page seven of eleven in the, in, uh, Jim and Derek's memo. It's item F, the second paragraph.
Oh, okay. Uh huh. Thank you. So the question.
So I assume that's a question for, um, for your engineer, for Mr. Erickson.
I, I was just going to bring up the, uh, site plan so that I can show the area that we're talking about. That's acceptable.
Yeah, sure.
While he's doing that, um, Madam Chair, I believe that was a, a requirement of the town. It's, I don't believe it's the entire length, but it's a portion of it, uh, but it was a requirement of the town. If the town wants the land and doesn't want the applicant to widen the road, that's obviously fine with the applicant.
So if I may share my screen.
Mr. Purcell might need to weigh in on this, I'm thinking.
Mr. Yoskin and Mr. Erickson, right now, this, this is actually in the plans, right?
This, this is the plan that was submitted with our application. That's correct.
Okay.
So you can see here's our frontage along Snowden Lane, and you can see this gray area is the additional pavement that will provide. It is along the entire frontage from one end of our property to the other, we're widening Snowden Lane.
Mr. Purcell? Did we, did we ask for this and, and want the road Snowden Lane widened there for?
Was, it was requested in the, uh, original, um, approvals, and it is appropriate. It provides for, uh, additional site distance and, and turning movements and provides for the future, um, uh, multi uses, uh, you know, to complete streets, multi-use. Yes, we, we do want them to construct this.
This, this plan also shows the meandering path that follows behind that road widening.
So does this, this create, though, the equivalent of more than an extra lane's worth of pavement just on this section of Snowden? It just seems very oddball to me.
Master plan, the master plan, I believe, calls for this area to be eventually bike, bicycle friendly on the roadway. So this is part of getting that implemented.
All right. I believe that Windytop, which starts right here, also is widening the road.
That's correct.
And because we extend all the way down to Van Dyke, it extends all the way down to the intersection with Van Dyke. So it is a, a complete road widening project in this area.
Okay, well, that, that answers my question. Okay, well, that, that answers my question. Uh, Mr. Yoskin, did Mr. Erickson have any more testimony before Mr. Schwartz's?
Not that I know of, he, he may.
Are there any other board questions for Mr. Erickson? Or Harrington, uh Harrigan, excuse me. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Um, I'd like to call Mr. Schwartz.
Here I am.
Mr. Mueller, will you, I've lost sight of Jerry.
He's sworn.
Oh, already sworn, of course, right, sorry about that, yes. Go ahead.
So um. Mr. Schwartz, you're being, it's so difficult to call you Mr. Schwartz. You're being, you're being called as an expert in uh both architecture and uh planning tonight. So would you give the board the benefit of your education and professional licenses?
Yes, I have a master's degree in architecture from the University of Oregon, uh granted in nineteen seventy-seven. I've been a licensed architect as well as a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey since nineteen eighty-two. My professional work since that time has been both as a developer as well as a design consultant. I've designed many projects that uh I've built as a developer. I've also designed projects and houses for other people, uh, other clients besides my own company. I've testified probably in ten counties before a dozen or so boards over the years. I've testified before this board on multiple occasions over the years.
Madam Chair, we would offer Mr. Schwartz as an expert in architecture and professional planning.
We accept your qualifications, thank you.
So, Mr. Schwartz, uh, as we discussed at the outset of this hearing, the application includes a request. For a variance from the height. Uh, setback requirements of the town's ordinance. I'd like you to address in your own words and in narrative fashion, uh, the reasons why you believe that the variance should be granted. Um, and if you have exhibits in connection with that, you know, feel free to let us know at the time.
Okay, um, while I begin my presentation, there's an exhibit that can be put up. Um, that either Carrie or Dave can do, it's uh called Six Princeton Houses, that's the only exhibit that I'll need, thank you. So the relief that's sought is that.
Excuse me, just, this will be exhibit A six.
Nice, A seven, I think, Jerry.
I know you referred to A six, but then I don't think it was ever followed up, and I, I don't know that that was ever actually marked.
Then we'll call this one A six.
Yeah.
You're right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to talk for a few minutes about the issue generally, and I won't describe this exhibit until I get a bit further in my presentation. The relief that we seek is that instead of the height setback ratio. That standard of the R two zone, which is a height setback ratio of one to one point five. We propose instead to use the height setback ratio which is used in the R five zone. And that standard is one, one point one. Want to clarify a couple of things, big picture things, right at the outset before we get into the weeds. Granting this relief does not permit a larger house, a taller house, nor a house with more square footage. Or more lot coverage, nor more lots. The maximum height of a house in all parts of uh the former township is the same, thirty-five feet maximum. Granting this relief doesn't affect that in any way. Square footage of a house is regulated by the floor area ratio requirement in the ordinance. Granting this relief does not affect that in any way. The front side and rear yard setback distances are also not affected by a grant of the variance. For the record, those setback distances are pretty much the same in almost all zones in the former township. They're slightly larger in the uh, in the R, um, the R one, but pretty much the same everywhere. Granting this relief does not permit more houses to be built than if the variance were not granted. The variance were not granted and the rest of the application, which is a conforming application, were to be approved. And the project as shown on the twenty-three pages of plans can be built essentially as shown on those twenty-three pages. So what exactly is regulated by the height setback ratio? It regulates the minimum distance based on a numeric ratio from any part of a house to a property line. numeric ratio in the R two zone is one point five. So for example, a part of a house of a given height, say, let's say a part of a house is thirty feet tall. In the R two zone, that part of the house must be one point five, that's the ratio. Times the height of the part of the house in question. So if you had a part that's thirty feet tall, one point five times thirty feet, that part of the house has to be forty-five feet from the property line. In the R five zone, you do the same exercise, except you're multiplying by one rather than one point five. So to clarify again, in no way does this affect in any way the, the absolute maximum height of any part of a building. Still thirty-five feet. So, question, do people build thirty-five foot tall houses in Princeton? I don't think they do, um, certainly not in the sense of building a box that's thirty-five feet tall. Among the ten thousand or so houses in Princeton, I've never seen such a house that lived here for forty years. So what part of a house is typically thirty-five feet tall? Literally just the tippy top of the house, the ridge or the highest point on a gable. Sometimes depending on the design of a house, a tall gable may face the front, sometimes it may face the side. Most people seem to find it attractive, uh, an attractive feature on a house to have a prominent gable. Many houses in Princeton have that. In the R two zone, if the high point of the roof of a house is thirty-five feet tall. It must be one point five times thirty-five equals fifty-two point five feet from any property line. The R five zone, the high point of the roof is thirty-five feet tall. It must be one point zero times thirty-five or thirty-five feet from, from any property line. That's any property line, front, rear, or either side. So the difference between those two numbers, between fifty-two and thirty-five is seventeen feet. So that is the most extreme case of what we're talking about. However, in both zones, the R two and the R five, the front yard setback is the same as are the other setbacks. The maximum building height is also the same. There's one other factor which makes this subject a little bit more confusing, which is the slope of the land. If land slopes uphill from a property line, then the highest part of the house is higher relative to the property line. Than if the lot were flat. If one house sits on a flat lot and another house sits on a lot that slopes uphill. Then the uphill lot is in effect penalized because of the slope, why? On this site, um, lot number five has a proposed front yard setback of forty-five feet. Remember, the zone standard is only twenty-five feet. So we're proposing to set that house back forty-five feet from the front property. That lot, a lot on that house, that land on that lot slopes uphill. So where the area where that house sits, which begins forty-five feet from the front, from the front property line. Is about five feet higher than the front property line. By comparison, four other lots in the subdivision have a setback almost the same, fifty feet. Um, as lot five, but those four lots are relatively flat. So what does that mean as a practical matter on the site? Well, the house, house or the house type or the house design that would work perfectly well on those four lots. Cannot be built on lot five, why? Because lot, the house on lot five is starting off five feet higher in the air than on those other lots. So could we solve this problem if we wanted to build that type of house on lot five by pushing the house further back in the lot? Not really, because lot five slopes uphill. So if you push the house further back, you're just pushing it further up the hill and the house becomes higher and higher. The more you push it back, the more you reduce the front yard, which seems counterintuitive, because for most people, they would rather have a bigger front yard. Bigger rear yard than a bigger front yard. So, before I confuse everyone further, or bore you further, um, I want to. Pause and ask a rhetorical question, actually a practical question. Could any detriment result from using the R five height setback ratio on this subdivision? I believe the answer to that question is no, I believe there would be no detriment, and I'll tell you why. It's useful to take a look at the R five zone in this town. There are four areas of R five zoning in Princeton. The two largest are the institute area between the Institute for Advanced Study and Springdale Golf Course. That includes about a hundred homes, the homes on Battle Road, Old Lane, Springdale, Over, Newland, all those streets. That's an R five zone. Another R five zone, by far the biggest one, encompasses the Prospect Riverside Snowden area. That's a huge area encompassing almost all of the homes from Carnegie Lake to Route twenty-seven. And then continually north and west across Route twenty-seven, along and past Snowden Lane up to Tyrion, up to Tyrion Road. Overall, this part of the R five zone includes about nine hundred and fifty homes. And this area includes scores of homes that front on Prospect Avenue and Riverside Drive and Route twenty-seven. It also includes about forty homes that front on Snowden Lane. So, why use the R five standard for these seven houses? The seven proposed Prentice Lane lots range in size from one point five acres to two point three six acres. However, more than half the buildable area of these seven lots is being preserved, as we've discussed. Only about forty percent of the total area of the lots are we proposing to build. As a result, the net buildable areas each lot, and remember, this is something we voluntarily did. Uh, we're voluntary, are uncovering these lots more than, more than the DEP regulations do. The buildable areas of each of these seven lots ranges from zero point five five to zero point seven six. In other words, the buildable area of each of these seven proposed lots is comparable in size to the total lot size. That's typical in the R five zone. The R five zone, the minimum lot size is a half an acre. And R five, in the R five zone, lots typically range in size from half an acre to three quarters of acre. So over the years, we've all lived in Princeton, you hear all kinds of things. One thing I've never heard is the following, you know, it's a pretty nice area, that area along Battle Road. Or that area along Prospect, or that area along Riverside, but man, those houses are so big and ugly and so close together. And they're too tall and too close to the property lines. I have never heard that, I have never noticed that, I've never thought that. I'm aware of any such issues regarding any of the R five neighborhoods, which encompass over eleven hundred homes on hundreds of acres. Across a huge swath of Princeton. So I believe the visual consequences of the relief we're requesting is simply below the threshold of perception. I believe that there would be no negative consequence that would be apparent to anyone, because no one would notice it. On the other hand, I think there would be two positive benefits. One is that the architecture would be better and more attractive. Two, you'd be able to save some trees. Mr. Erickson has talked about the process, you know, that we intend to go through as we design and custom site each house. Being able to slide the house around on the lots enables us to save trees and have a little flexibility. The seven lots are all substantially wooded, as we've discussed, with mature tall forest canopy. Which dwarfs the scale of any homes we're going to build. On most of these lots, the existing forest canopy literally wraps around and encloses each home site. In addition to the existing trees, there will be additional trees planted. There's trees along Prentice Lane. Within ten or fifteen years, the street trees planted by the developer after Prentice Lane is constructed. As well as in the front and side yards will begin to obscure the view of the houses. That will happen within, within ten years. I know this because this is what happens on the projects that I build. Um, in ten years, the trees start to obscure the view. Uh, I know this because I planted lots of trees at my house, and in ten years, I can't, if I want to take a photo of my house. I have to go through great lengths to not have a tree in the way. So to put this into perspective, I prepared the attached exhibit of six houses in Princeton. I took these photos myself, and to take each photo, in order to show you what the houses look like. I actually had to spend some time to walk around and find a view that was not obscured by the trees. The trees to a considerable extent hide all of these houses in, that I chose, which are not, not exactly chosen arbitrarily. Um, it's very typical, as you know, around Princeton, uh, you probably recognize most of the houses. The house in photo number one is a house that I designed and built, it's on Princeton Kingston Road. The photo was taken um right after the trees in the front yard were planted about twelve years ago. If you pass by this house today, whether you're driving or cycling or walking, you will not see very much of this house. Because the trees that were planted twelve years ago almost completely obscure the view of the house. Unless you have to be standing right in the throat of the driveway, other than that, you really can't see the house, so. Why grant this relief? Three reasons. We're trying to make it easier, not harder, to save trees on each lot. Each lot will have a unique house designed and fitted to the lot. The minor change in height setback ratio we're asking for enables us to shift the house location a few feet. Not into a required yard, but just uh in the area that might be affected by the height setback ratio, that's one reason. The second reason is we are trying to encourage variety and quality of architectural design. In Princeton, we pride ourselves on the variety and quality of our architecture. However, many of the older homes we admire could not be built today, because they would not comply with today's bulk zoning requirements. The heights setback ratio line, by coincidence, one point five to one, is exactly the same slope as a roof. With an eight on twelve roof pitch. That means if your proposed house has a steeper pitch than eight on twelve, you would have to move it back further into your lot. I find this ironic, most people find that homes with a steeper roof uh to be more attractive than a house with a, with a flatter roof. A strict application of the height setback ratio uh on these lots will disincentivize more attractive design. If you have a one point five acre lot, that's three hundred feet deep, it has no conservation easements on it. And this lot is flat, you can just push the house back another fifteen feet into the property. But if more than half the lot is preserved by a conservation easement, or if a lot is sloping, that's not so easy to do. You know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder. One person likes steep roofs, one person doesn't like steep roofs. I think it's no advantage in our society or for our town, make all our houses look the same or have similar kinds of roof pitches. All six houses in this, in this exhibit, though they're very different in look, have one thing in common. The front wall of the house of all six houses is about the same. From the ground to the top, to the top of the vertical extent of the wall, it's about twenty-two feet tall. But what varies on these six houses is what happens above the top of the wall, namely the roof. Some of these houses have steeper, more visually prominent roofs, some have almost flat roofs. The design of the roof at Prentice Lane is in strictly linked, linked to the height setback ratio. Few believe that the one point five height setback ratio is so important on Prentice Lane. That it should dictate which of these six houses, or houses that look like this, should be allowed or not allowed on Prentice Lane. And you should logically reject our request. On the other hand, if you feel that an individual choosing to design and build and live in a house on Prentice Lane. Should not have to design his or her house to fit the strict application of this requirement, and you would logically support our request. If for architectural effect, such as seen in house three and house four. House three and house, excuse me, house three and house six was arranged on the front of the house um that we're proposing. Excuse me, let me start again there. If you look at house two, and house three, and house six, the gable is a very prominent feature. Uh, on all three of these houses, uh clearly intentionally done, and to some people, it's very attractive. Do we want to discourage people from doing things like this? Look at the photo of house number four and house number five, the roof is imperceptible. Like, that's, that certainly makes it easier to comply with the height setback ratio. Um, if you think that that's a virtue and, and houses on lots which are somewhat challenged by the height setback ratio. Should have to look like house four and five, then you shouldn't support this. I happen to own and live in house number five. And I find it, the roof pitch on that house is so flat, if it were any flatter, it would void the warranty on the roof shingles. The house was designed by a fancy Princeton University architect in the thirties, and for whatever reason, he chose to make that roof pitch very flat. The house, uh, house number four is mostly a frat, flat roof with a uh pitched roof disguised somewhat behind it. Some people love those houses and some people hate them, I don't think we should be dictating um the, the design of our houses. Can anyone say that we're somehow better off or worse off if our houses look all or are not at all? Like any of these houses? The situations that are most exacerbated by a strict application of the one to one point five height setback ratio. Are, as I said earlier, lots which slope upward from, from the. are, as I said earlier, lots which slope upward from the streets, such as Lot 5, or, or situations where because they preserve so much of the lot area, the houses are a little bit closer to the street. For example, Lot number 4 is the largest single lot in the whole subdivision. It's 2.36 acres. It preserves a huge amount of area along Harry's Brook. But we situated that house 27 feet from the front property line. It's only required to be 25 feet, so we exceed the front yard setback. A strict application of the height setback ratio on that lot would almost prevent us from building a two-story house on that lot. Is anyone better served by us somehow building some kind of unusual house, not typical of what someone in Princeton might want, just because of the situation of that lot? The house on Lot 5, as I said, is 45 feet from the front property line. At that point on the property, the land is three to six feet higher in elevation than the land at the front property line, where you begin the slope of the height setback ratio line. Land may slope, but the floors and houses don't want to slope. They need to be level. So even though the land is sloping along the front of that house, it's three feet out of the ground at one end and six feet at the other end, the house is going to end up wanting to be six feet higher than the ground in front of it. So the basement windows and other parts of the house are not pushed back into the ground. As I said earlier, we can push the house back, but then the house just gets higher and higher than the street. And it gets to the point of diminishing returns.
Uh, awesome.
Mr. Schwartz, I, I, I don't mean to cut your presentation short, but I, I, I'm hearing some of the same things over and over again, and I, I, I want to make sure that we have a chance to hear from the public. If there's any chance at all of finishing this application tonight, we must hear from the public and then, and then have questions from board members. And so can you wrap it up?
Point well taken. I'll pause right there. I could talk about this for a long time. I think I should stop right here and entertain any questions you may have from the public.
Um, Madam Chair, I don't want to belabor that. I'm the last person want to belabor this, but I do have to take Mr. Schwartz's expansive and thoughtful testimony and put it in the context of the municipal land use law so that Mr. Mueller and I are comfortable with what we're doing. Um, Joel, the section 70C of the municipal land use law addresses variants such as this one. So if I understand, your testimony was that the very, the granting of the various would promote the general welfare. Is that correct?
It is.
And that's the positive criteria under the act. And if I understand your testimony correctly, you were saying that the granting of the variants will not result in substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the town's zone plan and zoning ordinance.
It will not.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Yoskin and Mr. Schwartz. Are there questions that board members have? Of Joel, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Chow, did you raise your hand also? Okay, go ahead, David.
Yeah, I think that some of your testimony, Joel, is compelling from planning perspective and some of it is not. I'm troubled, you know, you, you made a good case that different lots in this subdivision are differently impacted by this height to setback ratio, and yet you've requested the variants, the same variants for every lot. And you've requested it without showing us any attempts to work within the zone. You know, essentially, to me, your testimony was largely an indictment of our zoning ordinance, not a defense of the positive and negative criteria. And I don't think it's our job as a planning board to be trying to rewrite our zoning ordinance on the fly. So I really think it's important that your, your testimony should be directed towards, you know, the specific reasons why you need the variants. And, and you did that a little bit. You talked about the parts of the lots that are dedicated to conservation area effectively reducing the size of the lots. I, I think that's the, you know, and the, and the desire to preserve trees as a sort of a specific circumstance on this wooded lot that might incline us to give, to give the variance in a blanket way. But I'd like you, if you can, just really focus on those kind of planning criteria that would say not why our zoning ordinance is wrong, but why you have a specific circumstance here that applies to all seven of your lots that should lead to us granting the same variance for all the lots.
Fair questions, David. I have two or three answers for you. In almost none of the towns I've ever worked since 1982, have I worked with a town that regulates single-family homes in this way. So I, I didn't come here to indict the zoning ordinance. I will just tell you that that's been my experience. Secondly, the reason I dwelt on the R5 zone is that we both lived in this town for a long time. I have never heard anybody point to the R5 zone as somehow having a problem that other zones don't have. For that reason alone, I thought it's simpler to grant, as you termed it, a blanket variance for all seven lots. I'd be the first to admit that some lots are flat and some lots are, are steep. If it troubles the, if the relief we're asking, if it's troubling to you, to you or any other board member, I would say we can cut to the chase and you could grant that relief to the lots that are most challenged. I would request that you grant it to all seven lots because I can't predict later on. In 2005, this subject never came up. I never focused on it because I had a blind spot to height setback ratio because I'd never encountered it before. 16 years later, it occurred to me, since every single house is going to go through a mini site plan approval, the idea that seven homeowners would have to go through this torture. And when they finally came up with a design that they really loved, discovered they had to come back to the planning board and ask for a variance for their house seemed like a really bit much. So in 2005, I didn't raise this issue at the planning board for the entire site. Since we're all convened here to address with this issue, I thought that in the context of a seven lot subdivision, that's fairly screened from view and is mostly seen only by the seven households that live on this street, that this request would not be a heavy lift.
I, I don't want to monopolize the conversation. We can come back to it, you know, after the public has a chance. Other members of the board might also have comments.
I see, Mr. Purcell, go ahead.
I don't want to go before any other members of the board, however.
I, I don't see any other members indicating that they have a question.
I have, I have two questions then regarding the, the variants. And they're both whether or not other analyses were done. Was an analysis done to determine what size of home could be built within the ordinance without granting this variance? And was an analysis done to determine whether or not the overall subdivision itself could be reconfigured so that this variance wasn't necessary?
The answer to your question is I've studied those issues in gory detail. It absolutely has nothing to do with the number of lots or the size of lots. Like I said earlier in my testimony, if the board doesn't grant this variance, we will just design houses around this requirement. And the two photos I showed you of my own house and the house on Hodge Road, we will do things like that and we will comply. On one particular lot, Lot 4, we will have to go through some gyrations. In the plans that we showed you, we sighted the houses in locations that really make sense. For example, at the cul-de-sac, both houses are sighted so they are exactly perpendicular to a center line that goes through the set, right, center of the cul-de-sac. So those houses look like they belong there. So they're in the right place. On Lot 4, we put that house 27 feet back from the property line. 27 feet divided by 1.5 means at the front wall of that house, the house could be 18 feet tall. If it had an eight on 12 roof, the eight on 12 roof would just slide underneath it. It doesn't seem to me to be a virtue in a location like this where no one can possibly tell whether the house is a few feet higher or a few feet lower or a few feet closer or a few feet further away. I don't see what, what benefit is gained by anyone. But the answer to your question, I can tell you unequivocally, it absolutely does not affect the size of the house. I did literally scores of drawings when I, when I first started to think about this issue, projecting different angles, you know, from front property lines to see how it affected the house. I started doing this before the town adopted the neighborhood ordinance, neighborhood character ordinance, which finally allowed a dormer to get a pass on this. When I first started working on this issue, if you put a dormer on the roof of your house, you were DQ'd because of this requirement. Right? So now a dormer gets a pass, but a gable such as you see on two or three of those houses is automatically DQ'd. So this ordinance has the effect of basically saying, a lot of the things that people like in those houses can't happen here. Or will happen at a cost which seems unreasonable compared to the benefit that accrues to the town. I'm sorry, I know it was a long answer to your question. I'm sorry, but did I answer it?
Yes, you did. Thank you. I, I, that was for the benefit of the planning board.
Thank, thank you, Jim. Are there members of the board with any questions for Mr. Schwartz? Okay, members of the public who would like to pose questions, make comments, now is when we're going to do this. I'm opening the meeting for public comment. I'll just repeat that we respectfully ask that you keep your comments to, to three minutes and remain civil. And and so let's see, is it Carrie or Justin who will be managing this?
I move the people over and Justin moves them back to attendees. So right now, we have 10 members of the public and we had three people raising their hands. The first is Wendy Mager.
Okay, um, great, thank you. Let's move Ms. Mager in and swear her in.
Wendy, if you could put your video on.
Uh, yeah.
We swear in everybody who gives testimony. You probably already know that, Wendy. Go ahead, Jerry.
I don't think I am muted.
No, it was Jerry. Oh, sorry.
Okay, Wendy, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about the gable be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, so sworn.
Um, okay, so my comment is related to my role as president of Friends of Princeton Open Space. And I think that I first had a conversation with Mr. Schwartz about this before the prior approval. But I did have an email discussion with him quite recently. And that was about providing for or allowing for a path that would run roughly north-south through this property near the stream to become part of a path, a public access path that would run from Van Dyke Road all the way up to Herrentown Woods. And my understanding, I've been advised that there is provision for such a path on the property just to the north, Windy Top or whatever it's called. We, we as an organization have been working and, and will continue to work on getting the connection through Lot 45, Block 4502 Lot 1 to the south of Mr. Schwartz's property. We had a kitchen table agreement with a previous owner of that property, Pat Light, who was also active in Friends of Princeton Open Space. But it was not memorialized. Now the, the property has a different owner. So Mr. Schwartz indicated he was agreeable to that. I don't see any provision for that on the plans that were displayed. It appears to me it would have to be an easement across Lots 3.04, which is the house lot, and Lot 3.03, which seems to be for the stormwater facility. And with regard to the location, that could be a subject of discussion and refinement. Perhaps it should be at the eastern boundary of the wetlands. But that is the comment I wanted to make.
Thank you.
Okay, the next member is Brian Walker.
Yeah, Ms. Sax.
I, I'm just wondering, is there an answer to Wendy's question?
Yeah, I wondered that too. Thank you for asking.
Can you elaborate? I mean, is there, because I, I would like, and I don't know if this, this can be a condition or, or how that would work, but it would be helpful to clarify how we would make sure that a path like this would, if in fact the applicant is amenable to it, and if, if, if he is, then how we would ensure that that's part of the, the application?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure. I missed the beginning of what you said. Were you asking me what, what my thoughts were?
I'm asking you to confirm Wendy's comment that you, that you agreed.
Wendy and I and Mr. Zambush took a walk here like a million years ago and discussed this. And we discussed it again more, more recently. And Wendy is absolutely correct. I was inclined towards it then. I'm inclined towards it now. But like all things that involve regulated land, it gets complicated. So the answer is that I'm positively inclined because I think it's a good thing. Neil Yoskin should probably weigh in because he's the guy who's responsible for perfecting this. So one, that Neil give a short version of the rest of the question.
If, if Joel is comfortable with providing a pedestrian easement within which a pathway would be located. And if he's comfortable that that's not going to impair the marketability of Lot 4, then I don't have a problem with that. I've done lots of properties that have easements like this. I think getting, I suspect that Ms. Ms. Mager knows this, getting it approved by DEP and the DRCC will be a challenge. The DEP has permit conditions, general permits for recreational pathways like this. The topography is a challenge, but if my client's comfortable with it, I'm, I don't have a problem.
And Mr. Mueller, are you comfortable with the kind of condition language we would include that would leave that? That would, you know, require that an easement, pathway easement be identified, but not set in stone until and unless there's an understanding and agreement between Mr. Schwartz and Friends of Princeton Open Space or something like that, or the town, I'm sorry, wouldn't be with someone else. I'm just curious about whether you're comfortable framing a condition that addresses this issue.
Yeah, I mean, the, the way, from what we're hearing, that I would frame it is that there would be a pathway and with the location to be identified and easements to be provided for it. Wendy, I take it that who would construct the actual pathway? Would that be Friends of Princeton Open Space?
Well, I hesitate a little at the word construct because what we were talking about was footpath. A footpath typically requires some clearing and yes, that is something, you know, just to, to sort of lay it out and, you know, chop some invasive species off here and there so you can walk it. Yes.
Okay, so I mean, a condition certainly could be crafted. And we try for that with the location to be identified as a result. as a result of further discussions with staff and Friends of Princeton Open Space and the applicants.
Okay, great.
Can I just ask, Wendy, is that what you, what did you have in mind? And since you're also an attorney and you have, I'm a lot of experience of getting things approved by DEP, what did you have in mind in terms of what would, how this would be represented? I mean, in the agreement? What was, other than a handshake agreement? It sounds, seems like you had in mind something more than that, and I'm wondering what that was.
Yeah.
That would be a condition of approval?
Okay. And?
If I can make a suggestion, I think, I think what we're talking about is something that's been done near about 250 yards from my house here in Lawrence, where a property owner provided an easement if the Friends of Lawrence Open Space were eventually successful in assembling the successive easements needed to create a pathway between the neighborhood I live in and Carter Road. They were unable to do that. So those easements, they're out there, but they've never been implemented. And basically, the easement said, there's a 10-foot wide easement within which a pathway not more than four feet wide would be installed. Some easements, when they're negotiated like this, have time limits on them. They go away at the end of 10 years or so if the advocates of the pathway can't get it approved.
Right, well, we didn't discuss any time limits, but I believe I did say to Mr. Schwartz, and this is perfectly acceptable to us, that yes, this would be something that would happen if we succeeded in acquiring an easement on the property to the south to make the further connection.
So further into what everyone has been saying, so that's obviously a very logical condition. So we'd have the trail dead-ending on Lot 4. There's a relatively small distance from the back of that house to the edge of Harry's Brook. So we already have our environmental permits from DEP. So there would be a process that I'm sure Wendy has some experience with, go back to DEP to get this permit approval. There are some conditions that probably we shouldn't take everyone's time up with tonight that both, you know, Friends of Princeton Open Space and Landmark would like to agree to. Obviously, we'd not like the path to go right past the deck of this house.
No, of course not.
Right? We'd like there to be adequate privacy and we'd like to be close to the brook. So subject to a whole bunch of common sense things that don't devalue the lot, I think Wendy and I have as much of an understanding as we could possibly have at this point, we'd like to work together to make this happen. Right? But I can't say yes because I don't know where the path is. I mean, I can't say unequivocally yes because, you know, it sort of depends on where the path is.
Well, I think, I think you'll see it in a condition when we get there. It was a matter of wordsmithing. So, thank you very much, Wendy Mager. Is it Mr. Walker who we have up next?
Yes.
And then, and then after that, Mr. Scott and Mr. Mazzeo?
Anthony Mazzeo, or it could be Jan on that.
Okay, I guess I'm seeing different hands raised on my screen than you are.
No, no.
Sorry. Jerry?
If you could raise your right hand, Mr. Walker? Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? If you, please tell your full name.
Brian Walker, W A L K E R.
All right, thank you.
And so I also sit on PEC. But since Zenon is your regular contact, I just wanted to make a couple of comments that have been raised that go directly to some of the items in the PEC report.
Are you speaking on behalf of PEC or individual?
No, I'm just referencing the PEC.
Okay, you're speaking as an individual.
Correct.
Yep, all right, thank you.
And so the two things that come to mind, one, what, that we've just talked about now is the height setback ratio. And it's one of the items that I see in the PEC report that PEC is inclined to deny that variance. Part of the reason is it relates to the carrying capacity of the lot. And it's interesting, if you go just a little north and turn left into Herrentown Woods, you'll see several houses that are similar to the ones that Mr. Schwartz has shown. And I'm sure they didn't require a variance. And the reason is they're on much bigger lots. They're spaced further apart. And, you know, so that's one of the basic comments. You know, zoning is in there for a reason. And it's, it's, you know, to limit the sizes of houses. And I know we've, you know, this has been covered. It's going to be 35 feet if required. But there's just a different presence when you, when you move those setbacks essentially 17 feet further away. Ultimately, yeah, it comes down to floor area ratio. But, you know, this is a way of maximizing floor area ratio. And when you're shoehorning these into buildable lot areas, that's when the, when the issue comes up. The other thing I just wanted to mention is the maintenance manual. And it's great that this is placed on the homeowners association. One of the concerns is that, you know, as we see on Windy Top, my recollection is that was approved maybe four plus years ago. And as of just a year or two ago, there was a single house on that, on that development. And now I think there's two others and another one being built. The point is that potentially, I don't know, seeing an economic downturn and people aren't as inclined on building or other things. And suddenly, we're in a situation where we've created these lots, we've created a designated area to address stormwater. And yet, there doesn't exist enough people in the homeowners association to maintain what we've set up as stormwater management. And I'm just wondering if there is a way to say that until, until all seven lots are built out, somebody needs to be responsible for maintaining what has been given approval for, if that makes sense?
Yes, Mr. Purcell, do you have any, any comments on that? If the stormwater management system goes in and there's four houses built, but it's the full system and it does have a, you know, an actual whatever, class, class four dam? And, I mean, the homeowners association is on the hook no matter how many members are in it. Is that correct?
There are, there are two sides to that discussion. And one of them is a legal discussion. Someone, you know, a homeowners association, whether it's made up of one home or seven homes, is still a homeowners association. And the legal responsibility falls to those, to that homeowners association once it's created. Keep in mind that every, every project approved by the planning board has to go through a performance period. And a performance guarantee is posted. And once all of the improvements are completed, then it goes through a maintenance period. And we have a two-year maintenance period that requires the developer to maintain the property. So at least for the time that it's under construction and an additional two-year period, the maintenance of those improvements is going to fall upon the developer. So I, I'm not sure, I'm going to throw the legal thing in. I don't know what you do when we turn over these things to property owners associations. We will monitor it, but they're the ones that are legally responsible at the end, whether or not it's, again, one or seven. And, and the other, one other, one other thing is a developer is interested in making sure that all of the properties are sold. They're not interested in holding on to the property. So with all due respect, Mr. Walker's scenario, yes, if we had a 2008 recession, perhaps that's, that's possible. But I'm sure that Mr. Schwartz is interested in, in selling and building homes as quickly as possible.
We have, it's 10:58. We have two people waiting to speak, I believe. And I want to hear from both of them. But I feel strongly about not continuing and then as late as we might need to in order to finish this tonight, which I know is frustrating to folks. I just, you know, it's, so let's hear from, who is next, Carrie? And then who's after that?
Richard Scott is next, and then Anthony Mazzeo.
Okay, and any other members of the public who may want to speak? You need to raise your hand now because otherwise I'm going to close the public comment period after Mr. Mazzeo. Okay. Mr. Scott, can you, there you go.
Hi.
Mr. Muller?
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Just please state your full name for record.
Richard Scott.
Okay.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for that. I belong with my wife and the homeowner of Lot 4. So the, Block 4, this is the lot below, directly below to the south of this proposed new development. And we purchased the house as closed on late November, moved in December. So the first we heard of this development was actually over the, about two days ago. So we, I know, spoke to Mr. Muller today, I know, and to Carrie. I know all kind of procedures were followed, but the notifications were sent out to the previous owner. So we've not had a chance to review the documents completely, to actually look at it and see what's going on. And Joel's also emailed us two days ago, I believe, so it's kind of when we first heard about it as well. And so first, I mean, looking through the plans, I mean, our initial concerns are around sort of tree coverage and removal of the large trees and canopies at the rear of our property and how close that is to that new road going in. It seems very, I know there's planting trees and tree planting plans. And they look to be much shorter than the tall canopies that are in there at the moment. And I know you've mentioned sort of a lot of the homes would be hidden from view, but I don't see that from the plans. It looks like a lot of that ground clearance has been cleared between our property and that roadway line. New homes. So they're just a couple of comments. So my main question really, or request, would be that we were given some time to actually go through the plans and documents in detail and come back with some educated questions at a later date before final approvals given to this program.
Just to give a little background to that, what the obligation is for the applicant is, among other things, to send certified mail notices to all property owners within 200 feet. And that's based upon the certified list received from, I guess it's the assessor of the tax office. And the list included the prior property owner because they just hadn't gotten to the point, and I don't know why, and there might not be anything wrong with the process, but they had the name of the old property owner on the list rather than the new property owner. That doesn't create a problem for the applicant. All the applicant has to do is send a certified mail notices, you know, among many other things, to everybody on the list. And if the list is wrong, the problem is the municipalities rather than the, rather than the applicant. But given that, I did tell Mr. Scott that, because Carrie asked me to call him today because he had just found out. And I said, you know, you can certainly ask the board, explain to the board that you just really found out about it and you think you need more time, if you do think you need more time. So that's the background for this.
Yeah, thank you.
I would just add one thing to that, that as soon as Mr. Schwartz found out about this, he called Mr. Scott. He didn't have to do that. But he called Mr. Scott as soon as he was made aware that the property had been sold.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting that there was any malfeasance by the Mrs. Schwartz.
No, no, my point is that, had he not called, Mr. Scott still might not have known. I mean, my client took it upon himself to be a good enough neighbor to call him.
Oh, oh, I see, that's how this was initiated, okay.
That's how this.
Yeah, so I mean, it was initiated, the Mr. Schwartz contacted the prior owner on Sunday, who notified me that he'd contacted him on Monday. And then this emailed me, I believe it was Tuesday evening, that was the details, yeah, how we found out about it.
And just for everyone's verification, the 200-foot list was provided to us, was dated January 21st of 2021.
Yeah. And we closed on the property on November 30th, I believe. So there's just a delay in the record updates.
Okay.
You want me to let the next person in?
Yeah, Mr. Scott, thank you for, for your patience tonight and for, and for weighing in. I'm not yet sure whether we'll finish everything tonight. I really do want to hear board, but and I understand that your situation is unfortunate. And, but it, it is unlikely that we're going to put this off solely for the purpose of your learning more about it and posing more questions. I just want to be straightforward with you about that.
What would be my options and rights then in that case? Anything or none?
Mr. Muller, can you address that? I?
Well, in these circumstances, the only option that Mr. Scott would really have would be a litigation option, that he didn't have an adequate opportunity to be prepared, to prepare and to participate in the proceeding because of the circumstances that were described earlier. I think the board has to recognize the situation he's in.
Okay, well, we'll talk more about that after we've heard all of the public comment, okay?
Sure.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so the last individual is Anthony Mazzeo. Turn your video on, please.
And you need to unmute yourself, there you go.
If you could raise, if you could raise your right hand.
Certainly, here it is.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your full name and spell your license.
Anthony Mazzeo, and it's M A Z Z E O. I'm a homeowner on All Saints Road, which is backing up to the landmark property. And just a couple of statements I'd like to make. One of them is, I'm glad to see some of the changes that have been made over the years. I've known Joel for much of that time. And I know the landmark agents have all represented some of the changes very well. I think that the preservation of some of the, some of the wetlands and things of that sort seem to have been done appropriately. Again, I haven't been following all of the developments over the last 15 years, but it seems like a good thing. That said, I do have a couple of concerns that I'll be, I'll be brief. And one of them involves the zoning ordinance that was discussed. And I just would have to say that I'd be concerned about a precipitous decision in that regard that doesn't follow the standard process and procedures that you would expect. And again, as a, as a homeowner within 200 feet of the property, I would think that there might be some provisions that would. I would think that there might be some provisions that would be foregone if, if effectively that request was simply approved as stated tonight. So I think that would, that's certainly one of my concerns, you know? Are we, are we maintaining the integrity of the overall zoning system in general and the integrity of the process? So again, it, it's a question that I have for the board and there, there's that. And I, and again, I think also listening tonight to, you know, Wendy's discussion about the walking path that, that would be potentially on the, on the property line. Again, that would affect, I think, to some extent, my property in some sense and many of my neighbors as well. And I, I would think that there would be some discussion about that so that it wasn't something that, again, was pushed through without appropriate notice or involvement of the community outside of simply the landmark neighborhood. So those are, you know, two of my primary comments that I wanted to make. Again, to Joel, good to see you after all this time and I'm glad to see some of the changes, as I said. Again, I have some concerns about the zoning situation and what that would, you know, how that would really affect neighbors that are adjacent to the properties that would be changed. So I think that would be something that, you know, ought to go through the normal process. So that's my comment for this evening and I wish you all a good evening and thanks for your time and all your volunteerism. I have to say, as a, as a citizen of the town, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mazzio. So with that, I will, excuse me?
There are no more members of the board.
Thank you, members of the public. With that, I'll, I'll close the meeting to public comment and open it up to board discussion. I guess the threshold question right now is whether and how long to proceed. I, I know, I think I know that some folks want to press forward and others feel strongly about not. And so you know, I said earlier that we had to stop and I'm reluctant to go back from that, but I also, I see two people wanting to weigh in and I want to hear what you have to say, Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Quinn.
I was just going to say, yeah, I was all set for pushing on and finishing this up tonight, but Mr. Scott's situation really gave me pause. And I think that, you know, it certainly was not his, his fault. He, you know, just found out about this and I commend Mr. Schwartz for being in touch with him to let him know, but I really think that we should consider giving him the appropriate time in order to make himself more familiar with the situation.
May I address that, may I address that, Madam Chair?
Is it time for a board discussion or?
It is.
Thank you.
Yes, it is. Mr. Quinn and then Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I agree with Mr. O'Donnell. I'm, I, I think in, in Princeton, we put a premium on public comment and on bringing neighbors, giving neighbors a chance to be heard. And I, I think Mr. Scott doesn't know what he doesn't know about this application. It's familiar to some people who've been around for a long time. And while I respect that it adds expense to Mr. Schwartz to have his professionals gather for another planning board meeting and it, it does add to the burden of the board. I, I, I think it would be insensitive to someone who's new, relatively new in our town to just say, you know, we're technically correct and we feel sorry for you, but we're gonna take a vote on this anyway. So thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I, I mean, I feel similar to Owen and to Tim. But in addition, I do feel that my concerns, I don't, I don't know how other people on the board feel about the zoning variance, but we've heard from PEC, who doesn't think we should be granting it. We, we heard from one of the other members of the public who has concerns about it. I think there are a lot of different ways that we can approach it and I think it will require some significant discussion. So that's just an added reason why I think it's a mistake to try and push through to the finish tonight, because I don't think it's a quick discussion.
Okay. I, I, I'm, I'm coming down on that same side myself. Are, are there folks who want to argue? Well, I don't, I don't want to just set up an, an argument. Sorry about that. See, it's getting to be the witching hour and it's, it's hard, hard to think on the fly at this point.
Dr. Oakman also has.
Oh, Mr. Oakman, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. And then after Mr. Oakman speaks, Carrie, I would like for you to let us know when we might carry this application to what dates are open, Jeffrey?
Oh, yeah, no worries. I don't, I don't want to drag this out. I, I just, I just wanted to, to, we'll support what's been said and also to thank, thank you, your Madam Chair for, for maintaining our, our time limit. Because I think I'm, I'm one of the people for whom that, that really matters. And I, and I, I know that people differ on it, but I just want to support that because I, I feel like I need to be that guy and, and, and say, and, and say thank you. So I appreciate it.
Thanks. Any other, any other board members want to make a comment at this point? Ms. Sax, Mia?
Yeah, I would like to say that I, it was my understanding that in the executive committee, what we talked about was that if we are very close to the end and it's 11 o'clock that we would push to the end, it seems like we are not close to the end, unfortunately, here. So, but I, I am interested to, I would be interested to hear from the applicant's attorney about what, what the situation is with the, the person who just moved in. Is it, so is there, I just want to make sure that by, by next time, that, that, that would be, by the next hearing, that would be resolved and?
Well, let me, let me address it as follows. The municipal land use law says that the applicant is entitled to rely on the mailing list that's provided by the municipality. That provision was put in the municipal land use law because of the repeated abuses that occurred when people would get up and say, I didn't get notice of the hearing. Board doesn't have jurisdiction, it's not fair. And this, this would go on and on. To put that provision in the law and then not give it teeth, say, well, that's okay. You don't benefit from that developer, we're gonna give members of the public more time. That, that means that there's a right without a remedy and that the law doesn't recognize that. But that being said, we're not insensitive to Mr. Scott's problem. This happens all the time and it's not fair to anybody. But my concern is primarily with my client. That being said, since there, you're not making a decision tonight, there's going to be an opportunity for Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Scott to speak. If you look at the colored land plan, you'll discover that a lot of the site work, a lot of the vegetation, a lot of the buffers were created to protect Mr. Scott's property. The owner of the property back in 2005 was Mrs. Light and Joel and Mrs. Light worked very hard to reach an accommodation. So my, my hope is that Mr. Scott will be satisfied with what he hears. But, but if he were to come back to the board and say, I object to this and I want to reopen the record, we would not agree to that and I don't think it's legal.
Okay, we, we, we understand that and that, thank you for that. So there will be some time for these conversations to take place. Really grateful to board members for, you know, being so thoughtful about framing this. And Carrie, can you, can you give us a sense of when we might come back so that we can agree on that and understand that there will not be further notice?
Yeah, I'm looking at my calendar and as you're fully aware, we have many items that are coming up in the next few meetings and then we were hoping to take our summer break. Our regular meetings are, today's the third, so we're meeting on the 17th. We have two university projects. And then on July 1st, we have two large projects for Landwin and Simplify Living. We also have a discussion about Witherspoon Street on the 17th. So we're really booked until that time. Our next regular meeting is September and we have three other projects that we have to find room for. So I don't know, what, what would the board like us to do?
I'm, I'm sorry, was July 17th only the Witherspoon Street?
June 17th is Witherspoon Street discussion, 91 Prospect and the ESC's University Project.
Oh.
That's a.
I think that's already too much, but that's a topic for another day.
So my first is Simplify Living, if that proceeds, we're still waiting for variance information. So who knows how that is? Jim, what do you think about that?
Well, Landwin, Landwin is that day, then it's not even gonna finish that day.
That's right.
But, and, and I think Simplify will have their stuff in.
You believe they?
Yeah.
Okay, so it, it, the only other option is to do a special meeting.
Is there, there's, so between July 1st and September, there are no scheduled regular meetings?
That's correct.
Madam Chair, if I could be heard, I think in a situation like this where an applicant has already presented its testimony, I think the board should give it priority over applications that have not yet begun their testimony. And I don't care if it's the university, if that means giving us a special meeting, give us a special meeting. But I think my client's entitled to priority.
I think that's, I, I also want to say that I, it's likely that we will need to create a special meeting because we got word from the cannabis task force today that they are gonna try to wrap up. And they're, they're, it's looking, they're gonna need a special meeting from us as well. So maybe we can just add a special meeting. And then I don't know if we would push one, how that would work, but it's looking like we're gonna need an extra meeting anyway.
Yep.
But if we want to carry this, we need a date.
Yes, we need a date. I'm looking at July.
I know that Mr. Purcell is going to be on vacation one week. I think that's the third week in July.
That's, yeah, but I'm leaving on the 17th.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I am, I'm not gonna be here on the, I'm not gonna be here that week of, I mean, it's okay. But yeah, my, my son's getting married, I'm gonna be gone on, starting the 14th for five days.
That's a reason?
TMI, maybe.
Congratulations. That's wonderful. I'm, I'm willing to meet in, in early August if other board members are around and available. I know we try to avoid August, but I, I, I share Councilwoman Sax's concern that, that Mr. Schwartz, that this be heard as soon as possible with enough time for Mr. Scott to familiarize himself in case he would like to make additional comment.
Is the eighth out of the question? This is too late for the cannabis task force.
Yeah, it's July 8th.
I think that's better.
Right.
Yeah, I think July 8th would be fine for me.
I mean, and, and we, we just limited to the remainder of tonight's meeting and the cannabis task force.
Yes.
Sounds good, Owen.
Yeah. So are staff available for a July 8th special meeting?
I think we need to know whether the applicant is. Professionals are available.
Yes, thank you. I need all the help I can get.
Ms. Wilson, you've done another exemplary job of steering us, steering us through another long night.
Mr. Schwartz and, and Yaskin?
Yeah, I, I believe we're available and because the record's been closed, we don't really need our professionals.
Okay. So, so for the members of the public who are still observing, we are continuing this application to July 8th, Thursday night. It'll be 7:30. Mr. Muller, am I covering everything? You want to say that from a lawyer instead of me?
Yeah, no, you've covered everything, there won't be any further notice. But let me ask, if any, if any other member of the public wants to speak, I know, I think you've closed public comment.
I did close it for tonight, yes. And, and I think I closed it except for this matter with Mr. Scott.
So it would just be Mr. Scott then and know what number of the public would be permitted to speak? Is that, is that the way you see it?
That's the way I see it. And, and with apologies for Mr. Scott for basically throwing cold water before the rest of the board had a chance to weigh in with, you know, their collective wisdom. So, good, anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
I was gonna second it myself. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, everybody, thank you applicants.
Yes, see you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
No, you're welcome.